Good morning. I call the Wednesday meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. Note that all members are present. There are some additions to today's agenda. Following the morning break, Commissioner Watson will again review the recommendations for prioritizing set aside money for S R three federal relief funds. Then the board will act on the table of motion from yesterday. The second edition will occur following the chair's report and is a potential action on a motion regarding legislative matters. Are there any other changes to today's agenda? If not, a motion would be in order to approve today's agenda. Melanie and Ben. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, thank you very much. At this time, we are ready for a presentation on A C T work keys and work ready communities. And I believe Stacy and Natalie are presenting to us plus others. Welcome to the State Board of Education again.
Watson and State Board of Education. Thank you for having us here today to talk about A C T work keys and work ready community. We have several guests. I'm Natalie Clark, education program consultant and I P S coordinator. But I'm pleased that we have several guests. I'm going to introduce them in the order in which they'll be presenting today. From Circle U S D three seventy five, we have Brianna Crawford. She is their work based learning coordinator and college and career advocate. And Circle is a phase one work based learning pilot district. And joining her is Jordan Buxton. Jordan is a marketing director at Gravity Works and Butler County is an A C T work ready participating county. Also joining us today from Wamigo U S D three twenty and Potawatomi County, we have Jack Alston at the back. He is executive director, Potawatomi County Economic Development Corporation. And we have Gina Kugler. She's the counselor at Wamigo. Wamigo is a phase two work based learning district as well as an Apollo two redesign district. And joining us virtually is Sherri Toon. Sherri Toon is the consultant for work ready communities from A C T. She'll be available to answer any questions that you might have regarding work ready communities. Today, we're going to talk about how the A C T work keys and the data that's given to students from that process, if they earn an N C R C can help inform the individual plan of study in several different ways. It can help them learn about different occupations. It can allow them to have an artifact of a national certificate to put in their electronic portfolio. So the A C T work keys, the Kansas Legislature appropriated funds for a statewide contract to provide one free A C T assessment and one free work key suite of assessments to all public high school juniors. Beth Foltz is the lead for that state contract. Sometimes we talk about the A C T National Career Readiness Certificate as the N C R C. A little bit about it, it is nationally recognized, it's portable, evidence based, and it validates an individual's work readiness skills. Sometimes district asks us what type of student should take the work keys. And we'd like to answer with any student who plans to have an occupation after high school. So students take three work keys assessments and the skills most employers deem important for productivity and trainability. And these three assessments are in applied math, graphic literacy, and workplace documents. These are the skills that employers have said are critical for career success and on the job training. So a student can earn a National Career Readiness Certificate, and there are four different levels. The student must score a minimum on each of the three assessments. So to qualify for a bronze level, they must have a minimum score of three on each of those assessments. A silver, a minimum score of four on each assessment. Gold, minimum score of five. And platinum, a minimum score of six on each of those assessments. It's important for students to understand their A C T work key scores, and then they can articulate or tell what those mean. And this could be done in student led parent teacher conferences. It could be placed on their resume, and it could be brought up during to employers or post with post secondary institutions or during scholarship interviews. Within your electronic packet, we placed a link to this fact sheet. And it's posted on both the I P S page as well as the assessment page. It tells a little bit about the benefits of work keys, what is work keys, what is the National Career Readiness Certificate? What's the value for the student? Who else gets value from N C R C in the community? And then it has several links to A C T resources for students and educators. One of those links is a link to the A C T occupational profile database. And I worked with Rick Harris at A C T to formulate a lesson for students to help use this information to inform each student's individual plan of study. So this walks the student through the occupational profile database. It allows them to pick their top three careers that they're most interested in. And they can go to this particular site and it will give them the O N E T code. It will tell them the median income for that particular occupation as well as if the job growth is positive or negative. And then they can compare the median work key skill level scores for that occupation with the scores that they have earned through the work keys assessment. Not as a gatekeeper, but to inform the students if they need to improve in certain areas. And there's also a digital fillable form, and we're recommending that students upload this to their individual plan of study electronic portfolio and be able to articulate this. This is what it looks like when you go into the occupational profile database. It allows students to search by job title, career cluster, or job description. This is a sample. I searched the finance career cluster, so it brings up a list of occupations. And it notes if they're green for a green outlook industry, or if it's a bright outlook, or if it's an occupation that's expected to grow rapidly. And then you can determine what the median skill levels are for those three assessments, the applied math, workplace documents, and graphic literacy. It also takes you directly to O N E T where you can determine the average wage as well as employment trends. And this particular occupation, it shows it isn't a bright outlook job occupation. And then this is a really helpful resource. We ask students to research their career interests and place an artifact of that in their electronic portfolio. So the prior resource, that occupational profile database is a great site to go to, as well as the career pathway readiness tableau site that A C T has. And this is a sample of that. You can search the sixteen career clusters. And within each of our pathways or career clusters, we have competencies that say students should be familiar with those occupations within their pathways. So this is an example, if I would go to the business management administration cluster. And I can look at the different occupations that may be right out of high school, a middle level education, an associate's degree, or a high level of education that would be a bachelor's degree or higher. So I wanted to look at the accountant occupation. And so it shows me those median skill level scores for the work keys assessments. It tells me that typically I would need a bachelor's degree. It gives me the annual wage as well as the employment trend, which is a positive ten percent growth. So this would be a great site for students to research their career interests and place an artifact of this in their electronic portfolio. So I'm going to shift gears a little bit and talk about, that was a little bit about the work keys assessment. But now I'd like to talk about the mission of A C T work ready communities. And work ready communities were established in two thousand twelve as a national framework to help communities mobilize a common vision to link, align, and match workforce for economic growth and competitiveness. So this helps communities align economic development needs of the counties or the communities of the state and showcase talent to attract new and existing business expansion. It helps match individuals to jobs because business and industry understand the foundational skills of the applicants. And it brings awareness to the local communities of work keys and the value of the N C R C. And finally, it links education with workforce so that educators know what business and industry needs. And all the partners and the communities are speaking the same language. So this was a link that was included in your electronic packet. It goes directly to the Kansas work ready site, and this site is updated often. But it shows participating counties in blue, and Butler is a sample of a participating county. And it shows gold certified counties in gold, and Potawatomi County is a sample of a certified county. So if counties are interested in taking that next step and forming a work ready community or setting aside time and goals, the first step is to develop a team. And that team in the county would include economic development, workforce, educators, both K twelve and post secondary, chambers, elected officials, and business and industry. That would be the first step, and then they would submit an application to A C T and Sherri Toon, who is our contact for Kansas. They go through a boot camp. So both Butler and Potawatomi County have been through this process. Typically, it's face to face and includes sixteen hours of training. It is now shifted to virtual, and there's a one hundred and fifty dollar fee. And they asked that a minimum of two from that county team attend. Most recently, Franklin County went through the boot camp in March. So that is our most recent county to go through this process. And there is a testimonial, it's kind of covered up by the Zoom, but I thought this was important that Sartor countertops said one of the main reasons they decided to stay in Potawatomi County was because of the strong workforce and the county's commitment to workforce readiness through A C T and work ready, the program. So now I'm pleased to turn it over so that you can hear from the boots on the ground and first U S D three seventy five and Butler County.
Well, good morning. Thank you guys for having us. We're excited to share our passion with you guys and some of the steps that we've taken to become a work ready community in Butler County. I am Jordan Buxton. I am with Gravity Works Architecture Now as their marketing director in business development. Previously, I was the director of the El Dorado Chamber of Commerce. And this has become an initiative that I'm very passionate about. So even though I exited the chamber, it couldn't get rid of me that easily. So I am now the chairperson of our Business Education Strategic Team. We refer to it as our best committee. Today, I have with me Ms. Brianna Crawford. She is the college and career advocate for Circle High School. She also acts as our Perkins Pilot Work Based Ready Coordinator. Some of the other resources and team members we have are Alex Kofed with the Kansas Workforce Center. And then, of course, Heather Rinconbaugh, who is with Butler Community College. So how do we invest in our future workforce? And how do we get there together? So while I was with the Chamber of Commerce, I was having and engaging in lots of conversations with employers. They were struggling to find applicants, and more so, they were struggling to find skilled applicants. So how do we solve that? The same time we were having these conversations with employers, educators were also looking to better develop relationships with the working and business community. They were looking to build further work based learning opportunities and cultivate better relationships that show our education supports our working community. So while all of this is happening, we got invited to a conversation about becoming a work ready community and how to utilize that National Career Readiness Certificate. So in our community, we've got relationships with educators in both Circle and El Dorado. And fortunately for us, they all knew what the National Career Readiness Certificate was. So this was already a recognized tool in our community. And at Butler County, we are not trying to recreate the wheel. We are merely trying to recognize the resources that are readily available to us and do better at promoting and educating both our students and parents and our business community. I often say we've got really great jobs and career opportunities, and we need to do better about bringing some light and attention to that. So here we go. So as you can see here, this is a timeline that's used by Circle High School. In our research and discussion with both business and educators, we came up with a timeline of expectations that the students would be required to fulfill in order to receive work based learning exposure, experiences, and opportunities. That National Career Readiness Certificate and the preparation for that certification is absolutely vital as part of our timeline. So I will have Brianna Crawford share with you a little bit more about how Circle High School not only created, is supporting, and also implementing this timeline at Circle High School.
When we came together, we reviewed the resources available to us and our appropriate partners to implement this timeline at Circle High School and create these opportunities. We have outlined each year and the requirements and expectations necessary and essential in aligning our work based learning opportunities, internships or apprenticeships. We are requiring that all freshmen create a Kansas workforce account using their personal email address. We do not want them using their school email address because we want them to be able to use this account post high school. This account gives them the access to the work keys one oh one curriculum and is being promoted as a preparation tool for the N C R C, giving them a head start on the types of questions and expectations of the N C R C and providing insight in any skills gaps or areas of improvement that they might need. The free N C R C is provided to all juniors in the state of Kansas and is now being required by our district that all juniors take it. This year, early spring, we had seventy juniors take the test at Circle.
So we are very happy with that number. Obviously, we would love to see all of the students. But we can also tell that our education and promotion on the certification is reaching our students and parents. So we're looking for those numbers to continue to grow. As Brianna mentioned, these students take this test as juniors. A lot of times, they don't get the information back on their scores before they're making choices for their senior year and classes. Sometimes we would love to be able to identify those skills gaps and then make choices that might improve upon those areas. But because of the timing with that, we, that's where our partnership with the Kansas Workforce Center comes in. They allow and support and provide resources to us that help to implement early on in their freshman career and will prepare them for that National Career Readiness Certificate. It also helps to align opportunities for those students. We are absolutely lucky that we have such a great partnership. That Workforce Center local to us is so vital in getting this information out to both education and business partners alike. And we just want to make sure that we promote that, those resources as much as possible because we recognize that the Workforce Center is not only helpful to employers, but also to our education partners.
So as you can see, this is our Essential Skills Certificate. Students work on keys to employment, the workplace efficacy, and the essential skills that they need to maintain and keep a job. It's, it's another great way that we partner with Kansas Workforce, Alex Kofed, in our Essential Skills Certificate. As a sophomore, this is a timeline requirement. And it was provided to ninety of our sophomores in early spring of two thousand twenty. Given this year's obstacles, we are working on train the trainer. So Alex Kofed is training me to be able to give that Essential Skills Certificate in Circle High School. It is our goal at Circle High School for our students to stack credentials. We understand creating a successful program requires the students to be prepared, and this essential skills is included in the preparation and is an additional certificate that they can add to their resume before leaving Circle High School.
Again, we're finding in our conversations with employers, not only are they missing out on some of the trainable skills, but those essential skills. So this certificate gives our applicants or students a leg up and a standard in which employers will be able to gauge. So workforce development, where are we today? As we were having these conversations, and we do represent Butler County and working with those other schools, we recognize the importance of needing to speak a similar workforce language. This initiative really gathers all of those tools and helps us to unify and collaborate. Schools and employers are going to be looking at similar things. So in Butler County, we've got nine different schools that we're building relationships with, becoming familiar with their C T E programs, listening to their goals and directions, and of course, are hoping to grow this program. This is already free and at their fingertips. We are just there to support and promote it and bridge that gap in between the education and the business community by promoting this certificate to the businesses. I refer to this as a symbiotic initiative because while we are pushing this to our students, it will be a very hard ask to get them to electively take another exam or certification if the business community is not recognizing or recommending that certificate. So parallel there. All right. So Natalie had mentioned earlier about work ready community. Butler County is working to recognize those goals. We are at ninety percent, and these numbers are updated. I say that you can see we haven't hit a few of our goals. That emerging category, that's going to be those juniors. We do not have the numbers from the two thousand twenty one testing season, so we do expect those numbers to climb more. Fingers crossed we can meet those goals. Another goal that we have to reach that's not shown here is our business. We have to have sixty seven businesses that will either recognize, meaning that when that certificate walks in from an app meaning that when that certificate walks in from an applicant, it's going to mean something to that employer or recommend, meaning that certificate or applicant might take priority over. Sherry could touch on this here soon, but this is an easy sign-up for the businesses. They will be recognized on the Work Ready Community website. There's no other requirements that the businesses have to go through. So as we are working towards building our goal, or excuse me, reaching our goals, we're not having problems getting businesses to jump onboard. We need about thirty more. We started this initiative in late 2019. Obviously, my time at the Chamber in 2020 kind of pivoted our priorities, and we had to support our businesses throughout the pandemic in different ways. But now that we are settling back down and businesses kind of have their feet underneath them again, workforce development is important, and this has begun to become a priority with our businesses. Again, we're utilizing the same tool and speaking the same workforce language to both our education and our business partners. It provides stability and shows great collaboration, which businesses greatly appreciate because they're not hearing ten different things from ten different entities and trying to fulfill different programs. So we're trying to keep it consistent. Okay, so here you see we had a career expo. Again, this was a business and student event. We asked that the businesses provide some sort of interactive demonstration or presentation, really showcasing what it looks like to work for them. So kind of a day in the life of concept. It was very interactive. We had them set up by different pathways. Students came in, had to pursue their top three, and had requirements to have conversations in additional pathways. This was brought by our BEST Committee. Again, we host events that provide exposure and opportunities, looking to bridge that gap in between our business community and our education partners. We had nearly sixty vendors, our business vendors, and just under two hundred and fifty students attend. We provided information in their business packets that told them all about what the National Career Readiness Certificate is and the initiative within our county, which we refer to as the Butler County Act, ACT, pun intended there, and our Workforce Enhancement Project. So they received information about this. And then, of course, we are hoping that next year, or I guess it is 2021, this year, that we will be able to, again, host an in-person event. Because as Brianna mentioned, having that Essential Skills and that exchange between students and businesses is a priority for us.
We will recognize students who have received the NCRC and their achievements by prioritizing them to the business vendors and are encouraging the businesses to engage with these students in a professional manner. These students will also be prepared to communicate their interests and are being tasked with developing relationships and opportunities that could provide them with work-based learning exposure, such as job shadowing, mentoring, intern, or apprenticeship opportunities. We are supporting development in students that will provide the necessary skills to create their own opportunities. In advisory to prepare for the career expo, we had our students build their resume, create a business card so that they could not walk around with just a resume. The business card had a QR code that linked to their resume. We did mock interviews and questions, prepared them for questions that they could ask the vendors or what questions the vendors might ask them. We worked on firm handshakes, eye contact, the essential skills and apparel. One of our students showed up in a tux. But they got really interactive and they loved the day. And that's just helping them, prepare them for a future internship or a job opportunity after Circle High School.
So again, we're working really hard in the county to promote this certification tool and help businesses better understand what this is and encouraging them to use it as a vetting tool. Anytime you have a conversation with a business asking them to do something, of course, they want to know what their benefit is going to be. We promote this tool as a vetting tool. Unfortunately, employers will spend six weeks to six months really understanding if that applicant that they just hired were actually honest and truthful on their resume or if they just were really good at Googling a resume. That's time and money and part of a process that we just don't want employers to have to go through. So this acts as a proof or a standard in which both the education and our business community can identify. It doesn't necessarily mean that if you have a bronze certificate that you're going to be able to walk into a manufacturing facility and understand how to operate machinery, right? But it does indicate that that applicant or student has the necessary skills to learn how to do that job. So they are trainable. So as you saw earlier, Butler County is close to reaching our goals, and we are lucky and fortunate enough to do that because we do have the resources available to us. I can't speak their praises enough in the Kansas Workforce Center and the opportunities that they provide to our community through the Work Keys 101 Curriculum, which we provide as preparation to the National Career Readiness Certificate and that Essential Skills involvement. They're also really great for employers. It's a free resource, and we are fortunate enough to have a large industry partner, Holly Frontier Refinery, one of our largest employers in Butler County, and they have been long advocates of the National Career Readiness Certificate. They actually require that all applicants have to have this certificate in order to even apply for a position there. What makes Holly a little bit different, too, is that they've had some of their jobs profiled. Natalie kind of touched base on this. You saw the NCRC comes in levels of platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. Within those levels, there are also scores. So somebody has followed the different positions at the refinery and have not only the score, or excuse me, the level necessary, but the scores within it. Because as we're talking about our recruitment efforts and workforce development, a level in that is also retention efforts. So informing and educating our employers about certificates is great. What we don't want to happen is misalignment. So if you have a gold certificate, but at maybe a lower skilled job, probably not a good retention effort. That employer, or excuse me, that employee may feel under-engaged or under-challenged, probably not going to be able to retain them for so long. So we also stress recruitment. This is our recruitment efforts, but retention, these opportunities need to align appropriately. Okay, so here you see, I mentioned that we're still about thirty businesses short. On the left there is our signup sheet, very simple and basic. We are happy to do this for employers. We also provide them with the information on how to hop on to the Work Ready Community website and sign up. But this is just another way that we partner with the Chamber of Commerce in order to reach our business community. There on the right, you will see a list of kind of some work-based learning exposure or experiences. We are working to kind of create a clearinghouse of opportunities for our education partners. So then that way, when we have an individual or a CTE pathway that's looking for a community-based project or having a speaker come in or a tour, we have a clearinghouse and database of businesses that are willing and able.
We have some board members that have some questions.
Oh, okay.
Anne, let's start with you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation. Well, about a year ago, in February, we met in Shawnee County. We were on the edge of setting up our boot camp, you know, and everybody's engaged, and that was right at the end of February, and then none of that got to happen. So we're getting ready to try to pull that team back together. One of the things that came up was that a lot of businesses around here were saying, we have our own assessments. We don't, you know, want to use another assessment in deciding who to hire. Have you run into that, and if so, how did you handle it?
Yes, we have. There's industry that we're talking to that's both big and small, right? So some have very standardized practices in place. Some of our other small businesses don't have any practices in place. We are not asking them to adopt any sort of extra requirements. We're merely educating our business partners. So when they see somebody that comes in with that certificate, it's going to mean something. They're at least going to be aware of it. So we've had also some history of what Work Keys used to look like and if it's a vital tool, is it usable still? So that's kind of an obstacle that we've had to overcome. But by collaborating and promoting it in a different way, we've been able to find successful business partners.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate you coming today. Just had a, I have, I guess I have a lot of parents out there probably think that the ACT is a college prep testing thing. I mean, most people, most parents do think that.
I did too, until I learned about the National Career.
I have a question and then a follow-up to that because then you did kind of answer my first one, and you talked about a vetting tool. So I was thinking, what types of advantages do participating companies receive? One thing you did mention is it's a vetting tool, or you're saying it's a vetting tool. But then my follow-up question is, if this gives participating companies advantages, and Anne kind of talked about that in her assessment, how does it disadvantage individuals or other companies trying to compete in the same area? Because I'm thinking if you've got your ACT, Work Keys, National Career Readiness Tools to screen potential job applicants, if they score a gold level, they may receive a higher, if I'm hearing it right, a higher starting pay. If they don't score that or silver above, then they're not even allowed to maybe interview because they don't have that card or they don't have that piece of paper. And then you said it's not gatekeeping, but it sounds like, it sounds to me like it's gatekeeping. So I just want to, I just want to clarify that and see if I'm, if I'm understanding you right on that.
No, of course, a valid question. So it is gatekeeping with Holly Frontier Refinery. They're an app, they're an organization or a company that mandates that they're looking for a specific set of skills. Their jobs have been profiled, so it is a requirement there. They're kind of a horse of a different color when it comes to the NCRC. To our other businesses, again, rather large or small, you know, we've got BG Products. We've got a manufacturing facility and a distribution center. They're a very well-versed company. They've got their own practices in place. But they are another organization that if somebody walks in with that certificate, if they're youth, they know that they've taken it and taken that initiative as a junior, which they should say something. But because we have a local workforce center, a lot of times when job seekers are looking for open positions or what types of testing do I need to apply, that certification is provided to them, again, just as a credential that they can stack and an additional resource that they can provide to the businesses. So most of our employers aren't aware that there are scores within the levels. That's not going to be found on their certificate. They can have that conversation with the applicant, but that's not going to be evident. So that is part of our retention, is making sure that as we're promoting it, we also want to see alignment, which can sometimes be a difficult conversation. I don't know that it's, we have enough momentum with it that it's really affecting the pay scale of those applicants. But again, we would have to speak with those employers that are utilizing it to better understand. Thank you. You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
So this is a one-sheet that we gave to our students and parents to promote the NCRC when they took it early March. We recognize that our CTE instructors' involvement and buy-in is very vital to our program and our timeline, and we are working to reassess how to better collaborate and provide support to any ideas or goals that they might have. We want our students and our CTE teachers to have the skin in the game.
Okay, so here's some of the goals and the future that we have for Butler County. Of course, we want to continue to expand that Circle, or excuse me, that, schools within our county, Butler County, are also requiring that their juniors are taking this. We want to encourage more business to use this as a vetting tool, reach our work-ready community goals. And then we are working with Butler Community College in how to translate that as credit as they enter into post-secondary education. But something I do want to mention is that we understand that this initiative has become a pillar and the foundation of our workforce development. It's kind of the standard and tool in which we're building all of our other programs requirements and opportunities from. And as we continue to promote and grow this certification, specifically in El Dorado in Butler County, we have our Economic Development Organization, El Dorado Inc., that has just recently launched a pretty aggressive marketing campaign that's recruiting manufacturing or industry to an industrial park we have in town. They've got a beautiful website, really great information. But part of that information is about our workforce initiative. Employers that are looking to either relocate or build somewhere want to understand what types of programs and resources that we have available to support their workforce. So not only do we have a local workforce center that can provide applicants and training, we've got education partners that are also working to support more skilled applicants. And so it's creating a really great collaboration and process. This work-ready community goal makes us that much more attractive to industry and site selectors that are looking at our community. We thank you so much. We are very enthusiastic in Butler County, and we appreciate being in front of you today.
And we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
So I'm not going to go into all the details of my presentation because we really need to get to Gina. But I'll just, and I'll go through this really quickly because Jordan actually covered a lot of what I was going to talk about. But, you know, I mean, I, I got out of graduate school in labor economics in the seventies. I had, really had no idea what I was doing. And then I spent twenty-some years in economic development, and I got to be a corporate site selector, helping companies decide where to locate next. And we really handled the workforce labor side. But there was no tool. There was no tool in which I could, we could measure one community versus another and how well the kids were doing. And Work Keys came out in the nineties, and you'd ask the high school, "Well, how many kids have taken Work Keys?" "Well, I don't know, maybe, oh..." So they, and they weren't keeping any records, and the communities didn't know. And then the Work Ready Community Initiative came around. So you, you all know what Potawatomi County is, and I'm not going to go into it. We have essentially four schools, and we have Manhattan Tech now has a campus and a center in Omegle. Really good median incomes and good high school degrees and whatnot. Really kind of blessed. We're a 501(c)(6), we have seventy-five investors. So we have private sector money, we have public sector money, and we have real estate money. And we, since I'm an old site selector, I've done these labor analysis. I don't flaunt them in anything, but we just completed our third. And we did a labor and targeting study in December fourteenth, and I figured this, this place has got a big labor force problem in that there's not enough workers. So we formed what's called the Business Education Workforce Roundtable, and one of the co-chairs was Darrell Stuffelbein, who is now in Lansing Superintendent there. And this is the actual process that we went through with business people. You see the HR Director for Artech down there, the Human Resource Director for First Community Bank, Joe Bruner, who is the local Kansas Works Director. And we worked on this in 2015, all throughout 2015 and into 2016. And we formed what's called the Strategic Workforce Implementation Plan, of which career readiness was actually at the top of the goals. So this talks you a little bit about the amount of volunteer work, elected officials, municipal leaders. Governor Kelly was a senator then, and she actually participated in one of the two roundtables. So the six goals, number one is enhancing employability skills. And there were employers on that roundtable that said Work Keys is the way to do it. And actually, we had testimonials from some of them get up and said, "We got to test everybody on Work Keys." And then enhancing career clusters and pathways was the second goal that was really wrapped around the school districts. So the follow-ups are that one company is using Work Keys at the plant for the current employees. And then also using it in a plant in Mississippi. The employers are using, are using interns as part of the work-based learning program. Gina will talk about that. The student scores have risen. Omegle High is using to build the IPS into the development and career pathways. O'Nega High is also very involved in this. Oneega High is also very involved in this and tests early. Uh, one H R manager from the tooling company has issued a testimonial. Uh, but what we did in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen is we paid for it ourselves. The business community paid for the Work Keys testing. We took it right out of our budget. That's how important it was to get all these kids up to snuff and get the Kansas Works going in terms of testing as well. So enhancing employability skills, testing all the high school juniors, ensuring that recognition with Kansas Works and A C T, enhance the scores with Keytrain, that's not Work Keys curriculum, and we'll purchase that if the counselor wants it and work with the educators on it. And then this, the soft skills suite is part of that Work Keys curriculum. So we've involved the key stakeholders in industry to be active in the schools with job shadowing, visiting classrooms, communication between Herman, which is our Human Resource Management Network, schools, career fairs, continued promotion of dual enrollment. And Manhattan Tech has written, since they now have a campus in Womigo, that they hope to recognize, they will recognize probably three college credits uh for silver and above. A racist stigma of career and tech ed. And I think with Gina and some of the other counselors, we've done a good job of that. Uh, help individuals improve their workplace schools by fostering organizational success. Some of the challenges have been, it's four, there's four school districts. And they all have different C T E programs, and that's going to continue. Uh, with Manhattan, we have five. Uh, so, and part of Potawatomi County kids, some of the Potawatomi County kids go to Manhattan High School. Uh, we've established the Youth Entrepreneurship Program and the Peer Chamber. Uh, Saint Mary's has clusters, Rock Creek is very technology driven. They've just completed their expansion on their schools. And then we've piggybacked to run a program with the Manhattan Chamber for the fourth grade. And some employers are heavily engaged, like Sartor, Custom Wood Products, Florence Manufacturing, and Artech Tool and Machine. So some of the results, we began testing in October twenty fifteen. Eighty employers signed up. We had, now have ninety one employers. We will be at a hundred when we start to push it and then we'll take out a big ad that we have a hundred employers. We have a commitment from the schools to all continued testing. Transitional goal is difficult for us because we don't have a Kansas Works office. So we can't ensure that the unemployed are getting tested, and that's a little difficult for us. Uh, regional efforts, possibilities at some time. Uh, we had a hundred percent of our goal in twenty sixteen. We, we continue to go out there and analyze the workforce and see where the good parts are and where the bad parts are. We had double maintenance in twenty nineteen, triple maintenance in twenty twenty, and now we're quadruple maintenance. A C T won't let me be anymore maintenance. They've, they've put all the numbers up there. So I, you know, they now want me to have a hundred and forty five employers sign up. We don't have a hundred and forty five employers in the county. So how did we hit these maintenance goals? Hitting the current and transitional goals are always tough. Uh, we needed constant P R to get new employers signed up. We have a job profile completed to get points. We get testimonials from existing employers, site selectors. Since I'm an old site selector, it's easy for me to call somebody and get a testimonial. We've spoken at A C T events. Uh, and we held a boot camp in Manhattan and it was very successful. Sherry was there. She ran it with us. Gina was there. And uh, we'll, we'll do it again. Just somebody's got to ask, run a boot camp, but we'll do it. So the progress is, and I owe this to the teachers at Womigo High, and it was true in Oneega and Rock Creek. The scores in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty increased dramatically. Now, that's what the site selectors see. And they see that us compared to some of the communities in the South, we're much better. And I, I, I ran another set of slides, which you'll get later, on some of those scores in southern communities. And those are the Rock Creek scores from nineteen to twenty. So platinum went from fourteen percent to twenty seven percent. So what does the N C R C say? It's a commitment to a stronger workforce. Companies, employees, education validating skill levels. As an old site selector, I can see, I can take Greenville, South Carolina and put it next to Greensboro, North Carolina, and take a look at these Work Keys scores, and then I'm saying to myself, hey, I see a lot of gold and silver here. This might be the type of community I need to be at. And I think we've proven that in Potawatomi County. So that's our boot camp. Pratt, Bourbon, and Lion Counties attended that with us. And that was our employer panel at the boot camp. You see Kansas Works there, Bayer Construction, Potawatomi County, Champion Teamwear, and Midwest Concrete, all testifying on behalf of Work Keys. And we celebrate our platinums. I know they're spoiled kids, but you know, give, give them a break. They get platinums. Um, so it's a lot of successes. Um, I'm just going to hand it over to Gina and she'll talk about what's really going on.
So I'm Gina Coogler, professional school counselor at Womigo High School. And, you know, when I first started in counseling twenty years ago, it would have been unusual to do presentations with our Executive Director of Economic Development. So even though now this all makes sense and it's almost like a well done, of course you want to be working with your business and industry and your economic development. Um, at least in my experience, that hasn't always been the case. It was kind of, you know, school was doing this that we thought was good. Industry is doing this that was good, but there wasn't as much communication as there is now, so I'm definitely thankful for that. Um, when you look at the career development standards in the counseling curriculum, it's really these things we've been talking about. Students need to know about themselves, which includes their strengths. So this is where I saw Work Keys really filling a gap that was in the individual plan of study. Is it's pretty easy to find some interest inventories or for students to think at least that they know what they want to do. But really to have a tool that validates their strengths as they relate to transferable workplace employability skills is really important. And again, we talked about it not being a gatekeeper, but I also, you know, I ask all the seniors to fill out a survey at the end of the year and I put in the graduation program, here's their plans for after high school. And part of it when students come in and they're telling me it's like ten years ago, even they wanted almost to apologize if it wasn't a four year college. Or they were putting things that, you know, you can, you wonder how realistic is that? Have they done the planning? Not that they couldn't do that and maybe not even that they didn't plan to do that. But when you look at the whole process of an individual plan of study, have we as educators and business and industry leaders helped students really explore their interests and skills, know what's out there in the world of work and the world of training and put that together? And so not gatekeeping, but that realistic, I know what's coming. I know, I know if I'm going on to post secondary education, I know what the classes are that I'm going to have to take and that eventual career, what the skills are um that will be needed. And in enough time in high school that, as I said, that we can continue to work on those skills. So, you know, here's some things you can work on. If you're willing to do that, absolutely, this could be a career for you. Um, so again, the idea that this is everyone, this isn't just the school, it's not just the parents and guardians. It's not just business and industry, but we need to be having those conversations and working together. Even in education, I would say there's some misperceptions about what the individual plan of study is. And one of the biggest, I think, is that this is making a decision for what you want to do the rest of your life. You know, you took this career into this inventory and it says you should be this. Or you took your Work Keys and here's your scores, here's the profile job. This, this is what you have to do. You know, you, you set it your sophomore year, you, you got in this pathway, whatever it is. And absolutely, that is not, not the case. It is definitely about exploring, knowing those things, but it's designed to be fluid. So if you think about the career development cycle, you know, it, it is a cycle, it's a wheel. So giving the students the skills to go through that process. And step one is know about yourself. Again, your strengths, your interests, your values. Know about your options. So of course, that includes your post secondary training options. It includes your employment options and all the things that Natalie was sharing that they can learn about. What are the skills required? What's the training available? What's the outlook? How much money might I make? All those things that are important. And then it says to make decisions. And I would add to that, make informed decisions. So they need, they need to know these options and know about themselves to make good decisions. I think the more information you have, the better decisions you will make. And then the last piece is take action. And again, that's not meant to be, you know, take that action and then you're stuck because we know they may change their mind about where they're going to school, they might change their mind in the career field. And sometimes that's what I hear. Well, they're going to change their major this many times anyway. And they might. But part of me also thinks if we do a better job helping students learn about themselves and the world of work while they're in high school, they'll make better decisions in that transition period right after high school where they will end up at a place that's a better fit for them, hopefully. Um, so back to Work Keys as part of the bigger individual plan of study process. Because the individual plan of study is everything that we do, really K twelve, not just high school, but everything that we do, every conversation, every job shadow, every advisory. You know, anytime they're learning about themselves, learning about the world of work, having those experiences. That's a question I get a lot from students and parents. How do I, how do I find my passion? You can't take a ten minute inventory and, oh, yeah, that's, that's it. That's what I wanted to do, usually. You know, so I tell them, you have to show up. You have to have experiences to network, to just know what something's like. And then you, you find, oh, I did like working with children or whatever it is. So having those experiences, but the, the Work Keys specifically, that piece of understanding requirements of a job, really important. So Work Keys helps with that. Measuring their skills, developing those skills. So again, that it's not too late and it's not too late even if they've already graduated. They can always improve their skills. And then again, as we talked about, to certify their essential skills. So as we are really building our work based internship program, some of the hesitation I've seen from employers is that misperception. You know, I'm going to be babysitting these students or what am I going to do with them? So for students to, to come in and say, here are skills I can validate I have. You know, of course, we still want the employers to mentor them, help them learn those skills, but they're coming in with, with added value skills for those employers. And so important for them to know that. And important for the students to know that about themselves. I have a, a video that you have the link, but I won't have time to show. But one of my current seniors, who will be the first to tell you, he sees no point in reading Macbeth. Um, you know, and he's just completed a C D L class and is working on um that licensure. And, and he came to me making the case that, well, I'm going to be reading and studying the C D L manual. And in my work, my Work Keys scores, my highest area was workplace documents. I know how to read the things I'm going to need for my employment, you know. And I just sat there and, you know, he was trying to get out of his English work, but I thought, this is awesome. That he can communicate that about his skills and specifically how they're going to transfer to what he wants to do after high school and his Work Keys scores. So I loved it. These links were actually the same ones Natalie showed. So I send out a letter um to all of our junior parents and then a PowerPoint to our juniors. Because as Jordan said, it's, you know, to tell a junior, oh, you're going to take another test. They're like, what? But they get really excited when you talk about, you know, we've talked a lot about the value to industry, the value to a student to say, this test is about you. This is a test for you to see what are your skills as they relate to a future career of interest. Um, and for some students, they have a strong idea of what that would be. Great. There are tools to look at that career, look at your scores, see if they match. And if your scores are lower, you know, what are some things you can do to improve those skills? If they're higher, as was mentioned earlier, that's something for the student to think about as well. Will you be challenged in this career or, you know, you're not using your math skills and you're really, you're really strong in that? So helps them look both ways. And if a student really doesn't know what they want to do, okay, then plug in your scores and Onet and see what are the careers that come up? It gives them a starting place to do some of that exploration. And parents really are on board. So the question about, you know, A C T being a college entrance exam, what I find is parents don't always know, you know, they do know what the A C T is and they don't necessarily know what the Work Keys is. So in our district, what I do is we require the Work Keys and I make the A C T optional. So I'll make you right. You're not all planning to go on to college. You may not, you may not need the A C T, but your eventual goal is probably to have employment. And parents often email back like, yes, I, I, I really want this information. And we are just now getting ready to schedule our individual enrollment conferences with parents, guardians, and the student and the advisor. And so to have students talk about their skills and their interests and all the things they've done, to talk about why I'm choosing my classes for next year because it fits in this bigger process of the individual plan of study is great. Um, as part of a I P S statewide training team that I'm on, we have gone through Dr. Solberg's book about reviewing promising practice in the individual plan of study. And I won't go through all of these, but you can see some of them really directly relate or the Work Keys directly relates to those. And I'll highlight some of those as we go through. Having an instrument to store the I P S activities, really more that Work Keys can be part of that. So as they're completing their portfolio, definitely we encourage them to have it as part of that portfolio. And also their senior interview day portfolio that we use. The very first one that I skipped was a team. And again, ten years ago, I wouldn't have thought about having my Chamber of Commerce or Economic Development as part of that team. And now it's one of the first things I think of. Um, another promising practice is align the interests and needs of the school, family, and student. Um, and so one of the ways we do that is with these individual enrollment conferences. I can't even tell you. We've done that since I've been there twenty five years plus. But um, it, it used to be, let's just pick your classes for next year. And now you see that's part of a much bigger process and a larger conversation with parents. Another promising practice to tie together all the reform efforts in schools. So my school is in the redesign process. And if you look there, student success skills, of course, with Work Keys. Community partnerships that are mutually beneficial, absolutely. And real world, real world application, especially these projects and internships. So these are some examples of projects here. The pictures are Peer Chamber, working with our Chamber of Commerce. Some of the things students wanted to do was renovate our baseball field, our disc golf course. The chamber wanted to put in a story walk and so our students did the labor for that. But of course, they're learning essential skills as they're doing that. Another um practice is that educators have a scope and sequence of the I P S. And so, you know, Butler County was showing that specifically with the Work Keys. Freshman year, here's what they do. They do that curriculum, you know, junior year, they're taking the test. Honestly, I had these lessons more just in a calendar, really until this year as part of, as part of the training group I'm on. It was like, here's the things we're doing in October and in January for each grade level. But it, it really was hard for educators to see the big picture of the I P S and how it builds. So having it be a theme based scope and sequence for each grade level and, and something different that they're doing each year helps students, parents, and teachers kind of see, oh, I see how doing the Work Keys curriculum their freshman year is going to help them do better on this end. oh, I see how doing the work keys curriculum their freshman year is going to help them do better on this NCRC, which will help them communicate their skills to employers their senior year, so seeing that process. And these are just some other examples of some of our community partnerships. Again, looking at, we're pretty fortunate that we have a, a community college, a technical college and a four-year college, all within 15 miles. But the, the promising practice is early access to work-based learning and college experiences. So being able to offer both of that, the concurrent credit, Excel CTE, job shadows, internships. The bottom pictures are of our senior interview day event, which this was our 31st year for that. Our students create a portfolio with their resume, references, cover letter, job application, work key scores and go through three interviews with someone in their field of study. And it's more of a traditional interview. They also have a luncheon. Again, we talked about everything's a resume. So some of those skills that you'd use more informally, questions that you could ask at the luncheon. The difference that we did this year, I might have some pictures, is the internship program. And, and Jack sat in on some of these presentations. But this was our first year for a, a formal work-based internship. In the past, it was, you know, really everybody just sign off and you could leave school and go to work. Now it really is, what are your goals? You know, what, what essential transferable skills do you want to learn as, as part of this internship? How can this community mentor help you with that? What are the skills that you already have? Which ones are you trying to improve? And have those conversations throughout that internship. And it's been so much more meaningful. And then at the end of the semester, they present to a panel. So different from the senior interview day where it's more of a traditional interview, it is the students saying, you know, here's the type of learner I am, here's my skills, here's my interests, here's what I value in a career, here's what I've learned as part of this internship, here's where I plan to go from here. And I thought, wow, if that's, if that's not the culminating activity that we want students to be able to, to do at the end of their high school career, then I don't know what is. So that's really impressive to watch. These are just some other of the community partner, mutually beneficial partnerships. And then of course, we talked about articulation agreements, concurrent credit, Excel CTE. We also have a career and technical luncheon where we purposely promote careers other than what requires a four-year degree. So I still think, you know, that's more well-known and sometimes our students don't know the other opportunities. So all of our students who are taking a CTE course are invited. And we have speakers, sponsors there so they can go around the tables and, and learn more about those opportunities. And then this really is some of the culminating activities. Now, like I said, we're at the end of each year having our student-led conferences where they can communicate that information like our interns do to a community panel, but you know, in a smaller scale, more comfortable scale, probably with people they know, with their parents or guardians and their advisor, talk about those skills and interests and values related to the courses they're planning to take. I do have a link to our work-based internships. We have that all over social media, just what they're doing on a day-to-day basis. And also videos of them sharing, because again, I think that's important for their communication skills to share. Here's what I'm doing as part of, of my internship. And of course, then we're trying to bring more employers on board as well. The internship video there of Michael, he is the student I was telling you about. He's got a great YouTube video talking about the type of learner he is and showing his career mentor. He's working with our city of Wamigo and went, kind of worked with each department. Shows, you know, videos of the different things he's done. And it's been really cool to see him follow through, you know, getting his CDL and he's accepted at M A T C and planning to go to their electric power program. There's also a link to our senior interview day with all the documents and lots of pictures. And then again, just for students to be able to communicate about themselves and what they know about their future plans as it relates to post-secondary training and the career. So when they're talking to an employer, an admissions officer, a scholarship person, you know, that it's clear they have done some research and this is a realistic and viable plan for them. And on the high school side, that we have done what we can to help them, you know, the things that they can take advantage of during high school to help them be successful later, that they have also taken advantage of those opportunities. This last link, we realized it's a Spark page, so you have to log in with your own Google account. So I hope that'll work for you if you're interested in seeing it. But it is a fantastic example of the electronic portfolio that's part of the IPS. So this student has all of her, of course, senior interview documents, her work key scores, her transcripts, interviews that she's done with people in her field, her involvement with FCC LA. Just the culminating, all of her IPS in, in one place. So it's a really great example. And I'm a couple minutes over, so.
Get some questions, Anne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Gina, that was terrific. It was mentioned earlier that, excuse me, they weren't getting the junior work key scores back in time to help direct the senior year. Is that something you ran into too? Because it seems like that would be really important.
Yes, so I actually changed how we proctored the work keys this year. If you give the paper test, so the test is in February. Last year, we gave the paper test, I didn't get the scores until July. This year, we gave the online work keys and I could look up individual scores that day after they took it. And so my students have their scores now. So part of it's whether they take it paper, pencil, whether they take it online and if someone knows how to access the online program to get the scores. So that's definitely something we're working on statewide is either finding a way to get those scores sooner or making sure those in the school know how to access that online system and can get the scores and the certificates printed in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to let you know too, with the ACT contract, so this will be news to the people that have been presenting. But within the, the assessment advisory group I have, the recommendation was to move work keys to the fall. So as we negotiate the contract next year, we'll be doing fall testing for work keys. And then we'll make that available to juniors or seniors with the recommendation. If it's seniors, obviously they'd want to do it online so they can get their results as soon as possible. So we've been listening to the field, we want more participation and we're going to make that change.
Thank you, Jim.
To the entire team that made the presentation, thank you very much. And I, the only thing I can say is wow. I, I'm blown away by what you've presented here today in so many levels. And we've had discussions at the table just in the last day about graduation requirements. Whether it's a, well, I'll just say graduation requirements that really don't guarantee anything. Mr. Porter, I'd like to, I don't know, make a motion, do something to make this a graduation requirement for every school in our state. You know, and not just what, you know, the work, ACT work keys. It's you guys. You've taken a tool and made that tool work by engaging your community. And that's what our schools should be doing. This should be in every school. We should drop everything we're doing and make this the center of what our schools do, to serve each student and guarantee the success of each student. This is not about a big, you, you guys are focused on every student. And I can't tell you, this should be our graduation requirement, I'm just saying. You know, you can take a civics test, that's not taking you anywhere. You know, that doesn't prove anything. But this program, which is not just a one-year program, it is a, a philosophy of how we're going to do school. So I want to thank you for being the people who have showed us that it can happen. Because so many times people tell us that it can't happen. You've proven it, you've given us a pathway to do that. So thank you very much. And yeah, we need to make this a graduation requirement.
And to follow up on, just a second, to follow up on that, we are going to have serious discussions in the next few months about looking at graduation requirements. The fact is, you know, that Ben's basically the same since they started with the Carnegie unit in 1909. And we've probably had some progress in some areas since then. So the possibility that you may be able to make that motion at some point in the relatively near future is a, is a realistic thing.
And we need to invite this team to help us understand. As we move forward, thank you very much.
I just wanted to say that this is, that recommendation is not far off. Because there's states like South Carolina, North Carolina, and now parts of Louisiana and Mississippi, and Sherry could attest to this, and, and Missouri. And they're testing all their kids, so those site selectors can see those scores. We can only see the scores in a few places in Kansas. And we got to get the message across to Governor Kelly and Lieutenant Governor Tolan that that's our competition and they're beating us because they're testing all these kids in work keys.
I, I, I agree 100% with you. But I'm going to take it down to the individual, because our vision is the success of each student. You've provided us a template of how we can indeed, you know, complete, meet that goal, meet that vision. Because I see you, you see it in a global, I see it as each individual student is being served. Yes, the business and industry and all that, that's great. I mean, and that's, that's very, very important. I don't mean to, to mean that in all, or just put it in conflict. But our vision is for the success of each student. And this program gives us a template of how we can do that in the future. Because Macbeth doesn't get us there. I love Macbeth, by the way. But I, my track was somewhere else, you know? But not everybody needs it and we shouldn't have to force every kid to do that. But I'm not, I'm using Macbeth as the bigger picture. But yes, we ask kids to do things that are not relevant to their futures today, you know? And that's why graduation requirements needs to be reevaluated. And you've given us a template of how we can successfully meet our vision for the success of each student.
Only one other thing, and I failed to mention this when I was speaking.
Microphone, please.
You know, the, the, the economic development agents, when I first started getting into this in the eighties, were the bankers. Before that, it was the utilities, then the bankers, like the most important people in your town. And then in the early 2000s, when we got into workforce, it was the superintendents. Now it's the high school counselors. That's the biggest economic development agent we have. And so like in Wamigo, we're blessed.
My colleagues, we're well over time, but however, there are three people in the queue for questions and we're going to add, give each of those a chance to ask their questions. And then at that point, I'm going to have to stop this process and move on. And we're going to take all the, this extra time because this is extremely important and we appreciate you being here. So in this order, Michelle, Melanie and Ben. And at that point then, we'll have to move on. Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, my junior son took the ACT in February, on February 23rd, I believe with a pencil. And he was, he had his results within two and a half weeks. So we do have them back, well, it was quick. He thought four to six, but he, it was like two and a half weeks. We do have the results, I just want to make that comment. I can't remember, maybe it was you that thought it was a little longer.
And that changes well, because now they can get their ACT online before we were waiting for a hard copy paper. So those are some good changes that have happened.
I think the school received it, or we got it in the mail, I can't remember, but he, he did receive it, so.
It does make a difference, right when they take it. What did I do? That was exciting. And then, you know, when it's six months later, it's not as powerful.
Thank you.
Melanie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I graduated from a Kansas high school during a time when we were getting them through high school, right? Just get it safe and out the door. So I really appreciate all of the work that you guys have done on this. This is so exciting for me to hear. I love the tie to retaining people in the community is kind of what I put together. If you're training these people, if you can keep them in their local community, if we can keep people in those rural communities, that's a big win. And I'm just really excited that you're working with the business community on this as well. And like you said, you, you wouldn't have thought to bring them in just a handful of years ago. And they can really play a key part in that. I am curious, I just have one question, if maybe one of you want to answer it. My children are in school in Shawnee Mission, they are younger. And so I know that there are assessments that they can take, seventh, eighth grade, that kind of put them on a path to what might be a good career. They identify some aptitudes, I think. I'm curious, if you're seeing that in your own district, are they starting in middle school? And then this rolls into high school because you're talking about starting in junior year. And so I'd just kind of like to hear a little bit about the four years leading up to that.
So absolutely, it looks differently in the grade levels. But you know, starting in kindergarten or, you know, elementary and they have careers on wheels. So it's more exploration and learning about what's available. One of the things I really took away from having the opportunity to hear Dr. Solberg was a little bit of hesitation in giving a career interest inventory for the reason that if they haven't had exposure and opportunities to have experiences, sometimes that can be limiting, you know, answer these questions and then it's going to say, oh, here's a career that fits your interests. And that may even get stuck in their minds or their teacher's mind or their parent or guardian's mind. That really, as much exploration as we can do and experiences, having speakers come in, letting them do multiple job shadows, taking some inventories, but really helping them see a lot of different things. And then maybe start narrowing down when it does come time, you know, should they take their CNA or get their CDL or EMT while they're in high school? And again, even if they do, maybe they decide they don't like it. And that's just as valuable that they didn't spend a lot of time in school. Or they have that support, and sometimes they get somewhere, off into another training opportunity post-secondary. And then when they struggle in that cycle, it's like, oh, I don't know what to do, this is hard, even just online enrollment. And so they just quit. So I think the more of those experiences they can have, K-12, the more comfortable and confident they are. But absolutely, and it looks different in every school what they, what those assessments and inventories are. But part of the IPS is a graduated series of strength and interest finder. So it's not just the work keys or just the ACT or, you know, just the pre-ACT. But you know, things to build so they can keep verifying or explore new things. So I hope, did that answer your question?
That's great, thank you, I appreciate the, the graduated comment there. Thank you so much, I just, I echo all of Jim's comments, this is so exciting.
I'm going to piggyback off that. So we at Circle High School, we also realize that we need to start sooner. So even though our timeline was freshman through senior, we are collaborating with our middle school, like having the career expo open to eighth graders in Butler County, that's a vision we see soon. And then also, we are providing a promotional CTE pathway video. Because what we noticed, we took a survey, a lot of our students didn't know what CTE pathways was or what career exploration was. So getting that information to them about the CTE pathways offered at the high school when they're in the, the middle school, we think will help them start transitioning to their career interests. So we are working on that promotional video now.
Great, thank you so much.
Anne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This made my heart happy. I don't know how else to explain it. I wish we could clone all of you and, and, and put you in every school district and every county in the state to do this. Because if we do this, holy cow. I know several years, a couple of years ago, we talked about making the ACT, and I just talked about it with, with Beth back there, about making the ACT the standardized assessment for high schoolers. And I opposed it because I didn't like the message of just the ACT. But I said, if we can do the work keys, which I didn't know about until I got here, and I was the most recent high school graduate on this board from Kansas Public School, work keys wasn't a thing. And I graduated in 2006.
We know you're young.
I know. But, you know, graduating in 2006, work keys wasn't a thing when I was, when I was in school. That's not that long ago, 15 years ago. And I wish this were there when I was a kid. I mean, I know it's probably in existence, but it wasn't pushed like this, it wasn't used as a tool. And how many kids would benefit from having this? And I, and I talked to Beth and I would support making work keys part of the assessment if we can make that part of it. Because this is a tool for all of our kids to be successful, all of our kids. Those going to college, those going to tech school, those going straight into the career field. I don't know how else you can get 100% of your kids affected by that in terms of that. So I'm really excited by this work. I really, I wrote down a note, and I, we're going to get the slideshow presentation, right Randy? Good, I guess more Peggy than Randy. That slide about what an IPS is, I have never had a bigger light bulb go off than seeing that slide. I love that slide, I wrote it down, like, I want to copy it, I want to share it with all my, all my personnel. That's an IPS in a nutshell, and I appreciate it. Layman's terms, talks it over what it is and what it isn't. It's not a checklist, it's a tool. It's a map. And it's a working, living, breathing thing, not a checklist that, okay, I'm done with that, move on to the next step. And it's a working, living, breathing thing, not a checklist that, okay, I'm done with that, move on to the next step. And I really appreciate that insight. So thank you for all the work that you're doing. Again, this whole presentation made my heart happy. It's a great day to start a Wednesday. And thank you very much for the traveling here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I know we're short on time, but I feel compelled as a school counselor to also please ask if you do make something like work keys a requirement, to also realize, when someone said, oh, we hear this can't be done. I think it's two things. One, understanding how it can be used in the IPS. And I think there's educators who don't understand that, you know, we're obviously still educating our business community. But the second thing is the time. You know, my school is not that big, but it's a hundred seniors that I'm sorting tests or getting the online logins, finding a place during the school day, so it can't be at school. Where am I going to test these students? Who's going to proctor it, you know? And that, that's one piece of the IPS. So just a plug also for our, you know, career counselors, career advocates, work-based internships, and school counselors to, to remember us in that, and please promote those positions as well.
Okay, thank you.
We thank you very much for your presentation. These are the sorts of things that we need to be hearing. And not only do we need to be hearing, we need to be taking action to ensure that if, if we in fact believe what we say, that Kansas leads the world in the success of each student, we have to have opportunities for each student to, to reach their potential and guide them and help them and support them in that effort. So thank you so much for your presentation. I was glad to see that there was somebody else that went to graduate school in the seventies and didn't know what they were doing when they got out. I thought I was the only one.
I had no idea what I was doing.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it. We will reconvene at ten forty. Okay, we'll come back to order. And we have a review of the S R three recommendations. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. I'm telling you, after sitting through the last presentation, doesn't everyone wanna jump up and just wanna help kids in that process, you know? Let's tell them, Ben, when you, when you, when you have the right process and then you select the right tools to assist you in that, it's a fantastic thing. It's just not one thing, it's, it's all that. So appreciate Natalie kinda illustrating what it, you know, really looks like, boots on the ground. I'm going to go over this pretty quickly, but I want to answer your questions about how we arrived at this and what's going on. Again, this chart, I think in one place kind of outlines the major components. Yesterday I highlighted for you. Of course, this is out the door and I talked, and we talked about the special ed needs. This is getting ready to go out the door. The Eames one comes to you on April 19th. That's the private school money. And we talked about the special ed funding because I know special ed directors have had a concern. And then Esther three starts in earnest. This summer, it will start going out this summer along with Eames two. So we have, we have to have a process by the 10% set aside, which by law says goes to the State Department of Education. Well, as you know, in many states, and then we pointed this out yesterday, Mr. Chair, there isn't a state board or if there is, it's, it's, it's maybe appointed by the governor. It's not an elected board. So as we did in S or two, we want to bring this to you because we've got to get RFPs out. That takes quite a bit of time and then, and then we've got to get this money out to school districts. So we keep thinking about four summers, three school years. So let me, let me just again use this chart. If you look at the set aside, focus on where it says S E A set aside, that's ours. Nine and a half percent was at our discretion in S or two, meaning we could do anything we want pandemic related with that set aside. Does that make sense? We don't have that luxury in S or three. Do you see that? The federal government said, all right, you still get nine and a half percent, but more than half of that's got to go to learning loss across the state of Kansas. You've got to have some way to attack learning loss across the state of Kansas. One percent has to be for after school programming. One percent has to be for summer enrichment. So we had nine and a half percent in S or two, we have two and a half percent at the discretion of the agency in S or three. Total amount's the same, but you see the difference? That's really important to note. And there's some other differences in terms of the local districts have to use 20% of their money for learning loss. So as an easy, you know, number, Dina, if, for example, Concordia got a million dollars, 200,000 of that in S or three has to be spent on learning loss. In S or two, they could spend it on any of the 15 categories. They had much more discretion as we did. Otherwise, it's somewhat the same, but each one of these is a little bit different. This was S or two. We had nine and a half percent set aside. And we did two things, two big things with that. We gave every school district on the categorical aid reimbursement, 12 million in 2122 and 12 million in 2223 in special ed. Didn't have to do that in S or three because the federal government did that on the federal. And we trued up leveled up districts to $300, minimum of $300. And a lot of that came because of a conversation that I had with the Blue Valley Superintendent and other people in Johnson County. That's how we spent all the discretion money. Okay. When we look at S or three, we, there's the admin money. All right. We walked through that. I'm just going to quickly, you know, there's lots of things that we're doing with that additional staff. Boston Consulting Group to help us. I'm just going through again, we talked about, you know, data analysis, support for the deaf and blind. That's the 0.5% for admin money. It stays here really with the agency to support the work. Here's the two and a half percent discretionary, meaning we can spend this money any way that we decide within the confines of the pandemic. It was nine and a half percent in S or two. It's two and a half percent in S or three. Now it's a bigger number. I mean, right, we're doubling them out from S or two to three. So what we want to do is maximize the true up again, or the level up. So we doubled the amount, which is because we're in essence doubling the amount and that takes almost all of the discretionary money. In fact, if we were to go higher, we run, we run out of, we don't have any more discretionary money to spend. I told you yesterday, when the federal government sent, sends out title formulas, it's intended to go to poverty. It's Lyndon Johnson's War on Poverty. And it's intended to attack reading and math primarily in poverty stricken areas across the United States. That works great until you start sending out this amount of money on a poverty schedule. Because there's no adequacy in it. There's lots of equity. Does that make sense? So what you're going to hear Betty, because and this is, you know, it's kind of like special ed saying, we don't know is, are you going to take the money that Wichita is going to get and give it to Mays, for example, in the trip? No. This is the agency set aside money. This is, that's a misconception. So it doesn't take anything from Dodge City. And we're, so we're giving almost all of the two and a half percent to level that up to $600, which doubles the amount from S or two. That's still not enough. But the formula of 90% goes directly to school districts on that poverty formula. Wasn't something that we did. We have a little bit of money to do what you just talked about, what you heard, which is kind of a marketing to parents on post-secondary and then at the teachers regional conference. Now I want to stop here. Cause I want to remind you as we go through this and we get to the summer learning loss, et cetera. So when we started to look at S or three, we brought Brad brought his directors, his team, this team that we have from McCrell, is it McCrell or Rell? McCrell out of Colorado that helps us. And they started playing with a little bit of a list. I took those concepts and then started to work with advisory groups that I meet with twice a year. And I'll go over those with you. So let's start with the teachers. So I have a group of teachers that are made up of Kansas Teachers of the Year teams, present in past Horizon Award winners. And they said to me, Randy, we need a teacher run conference for teachers. Here's an example of when we did it. And so the list started to change. That made sense. So advisory for teachers and I have one for special ed. Then I have one for curriculum leaders. I have one for principals. I have one for superintendents. And those range from, in all those categories, from small school districts to big, west, east, southeast to north. It's interesting Janet, sometimes I hear from my friends, I look at Jim when I say this, but in southeast Kansas, as if I didn't grow up there. Like you don't know Randy, what it's like in southeast Kansas. That's someone telling me, really? I, I grew up as a, with a single mom in, in southeast Kansas in Coffeyville. It's not exactly, you know, really wealthy place. But we took all that advisory council and the list you're seeing now is not the same list that we started with. So I mean, it was all altered by that input. Betty?
Thank you. Just going back to your committee, if you could help me with that a little bit. You mentioned that one of the committees, which is comprised of teachers, is made up of your Kansas Teacher of the Year. So when you have like Wichita as an example, that I don't know when the last time a teacher of the year has been from two, five, nine. How do you, how do you fix that so that it's, it's representative? You have a good representation of across the state of Kansas?
So when I say Kansas Teacher of the Year, we, I look at that as our eight members that we call our team for that year. So Lon Hugh was a Kansas Teacher of the Year two years ago. I lose track of the years, they blend together, but she was from Wichita and she was on that team. So I look at the eight team members, not just the Kansas teacher, not just Abbott the Ross Roy, for example.
Okay. So it's not just your current list of
No, no, no. It goes all the way back to 1997.
Gotcha.
And then sometimes they leave the state or retire.
Okay.
So, so it's a combination of those advisory groups and the purpose of those is I run everything by them. Couple of times a year that are pending with, you know, before the border, I think are going to be coming up. And I, and, and there are people that aren't shy about telling me what they think. And I just want to tell you on this issue, there was about a knock down drag out in two of those, the superintendent group and the curriculum on how to spend it. And it was over the true up dollars. The small schools didn't like that. Can you believe that? They didn't like that initially. I'd explained to them why when they, because they thought Betty, we were taking money from them. That was just their initial thought. So, but we, we, we had to, you know, work through that and, and that's where this list and then we took it to the superintendent group on Thursday and laid that out and again, ask, you know, do you have any input? And on that are a variety of people. I know a lot of you join, I only was saying she joins. You know, it's not all superintendents, it's special ed directors and some other people. But that's, then after all that's done, then I go to what the organizations with, see if there's any change. So that's K N E A, USA, K S S A, that's the United School of Ministers, superintendents and K S B. And their concern was Randy, look at assessments, make sure we're going to get the right assessment for statewide assessment. There are many of those really, really do that well. That was so, but anyway, I wanted you to just kind of understand how this all came about. Now let's look at the rest of how we have to spend the money. Learning loss, 5% of our nine and a half percent has to be spent on learning loss. Now here's the challenge. Where do you think we've experienced the greatest learning loss? We don't know. Honest, from a state, you know, Michelle, you were talking about data, we don't have a uniform set of data points. So where would we guess that we are going to experience the greatest learning loss in areas that have been out of school the greatest amount of time? That's our assumption that the more virtual you were, the great, but we don't know empirically, that's a fact. But we believe that. So when we look at learning loss, between all those groups, the decision was made, spend it in two areas because everyone can use these two areas. First of all, spend it on statewide training for the science of reading, mathematics and those priorities with social emotional. And target first, the areas that you have the greatest population where you probably had learning loss. Where are those? Wyandotte, Johnson, Douglas, Shawnee, Sedgwick. That's where we had the most hybrid and the most, most remote learning. So we start there and then we broaden out to the state after that. Training over three or four years and then get better assessments so that we can uniformly have some assess, if, if you want, you know, have, no, no district has to do it Ben, but if you want purchase, you can get these for free. So as an example, independence. For example, let's just say we choose as a statewide purchase of assessment, Fast Bridge. That's the most commonly used one. There are many others. We're still looking at that. And let's say Independence, Kansas uses Fast Bridge. They wouldn't have to pay for that. They could save that money in their general fund for doing that. So that's the, that's the thought behind this is statewide training, open first to the counties that we think were impacted the greatest. Why? Because it's about learning loss and we don't have any statewide data. We've got district data. So if you remember, when I presented to you the data, one of the, one of the people I called was Brent Jaeger in Olathe because I knew that they had great social emotional data through panorama. And you know, I said, can you share with me some aggregate data? I could at least show you, you know, what at least one school district was seeing. And then we did that with Fast Bridge, which is the most commonly held. That's, that's the assumption statewide training. Better assessment assistance that came from primarily the curriculum people. Summer enrichment. One percent of the money has to go to summer enrichment across the state of Kansas. So the question is, how do you do that? Well, again, the thoughts were boys and girls clubs YMCA's have been doing that work and supporting especially the larger urban areas. And guess what? Daryl Coleman at Niemhaus Central said over the superintendent, Randy, we don't have any of that. We have four H and other, the other small districts said four H is something we ought to expand because they do a great job. Give you an example, that's where libraries and rec commissions came in. So allowing those organizations in those communities to offer summer enrichment as was this. And initially the thought was that, and that Santa Fe Trail could get a bus and drive to Discovery Center. Denise Jennings at Jeff North said, Randy, what if we just encourage families? Cause families haven't gotten to go do anything together. Encourage them to stay in Kansas and go to Discovery Center. And when they get there, it's no cost to them. Great idea, right? So the, this is how this worked is the ideas came out. So this is a big lift because there's not one organization that we have to work through. I mean, I'm thinking of Sally who sat on the Cosmosphere board. We got to go work with the Cosmosphere separate. Then you work with Old Town, for example, in Wichita. And then we had a number of school districts that applied for a 21st century learning grant to run summer programs and we didn't have enough money. So this would help fund some of those great programs that we just didn't have enough money to do. And other areas, as you mentioned, Gene, that we could do that, that has to be used for summer enrichment. Same thing for after school. Where do kids go after school? Now in Norton, Gene, they could run their own, right? With the money that they have. So we're looking at the same programming and the same 21st century learning. And that's the nine and a half percent. So I just want to kind of recap and I'm going to go back to this. Sorry. Look at the S E A set aside. 5% has got to be for learning loss. The, the recommendation to you today from the groups are use that for statewide training, targeting the largest districts that have been disrupted first, then opening up to the state and statewide assessment. One percent has to be for after school. There, we'd like to use existing people that do after school really well. And same thing with summer enrichment. The discretionary money that we have control over the pandemic, give that to true up the low poverty school districts to the maximum amount that we can, $600 per pupil. And then we have half a percent for administration. Now, if you go forward with this, we have to go do RFPs for all this work. Then we have to bring those contracts back to you for approval. So I'm going to use letters. If, if we go do an RFP saying we want a science-based training program, letters is one of those. It's one that we've used in the past through our TAZN network. That there has to be an RFP, has to go through department administration. Has to then be, there has to be a period of time, then that contract has to there has to be a period of time, then that contract has to come back to you and you start to see what happens. Summer of twenty-one's going to be, start to get away from us and we're going to be down to three summers. So, all of this is somewhat time sensitive, but, and not entirely, right? So, this isn't going to be, this isn't down to the dollar, but it's in the broad categories of, you know, of, of where kind of settled on, is this where, um, the money should go? So, with that, I'm, I'm gonna stay on this. I'd be happy to answer questions, Mr. Chairman. And Brad's here if we get in the weeds and, uh, I get lost, which is pretty easy.
Easy to get in the weeds.
No, easy for me to get lost.
Easy to get in the weeds.
Yeah.
Um, Randy, uh, a couple of questions. First, uh, an explanation or an elaboration on what, what is Higher Pass?
Yeah, so, Higher Pass.
I think I know what it is.
Higher Pass is a company out of Manhattan, Kansas, that has developed a parent portal on what you just saw presented to you about the occupations in Kansas that some require baccalaureate masters, but most do not, most of the jobs do not. And all the jobs that are available and to explore those opportunities with families and kids in school districts. And it's, it would be free, no charge then for parents to have that access.
And I would imagine that, uh, counselors and schools and districts would, uh, would publicize this and make it available. How can we make sure it's getting to some of the populations that were most vulnerable during the pandemic? Because I, I can see, you know, my house, they're going to do it, but what about, uh, what about poverty? What about, uh, areas where they don't have access?
I'm, I'm going to draw the big question mark for you. And I'm going to look right at Betty and Janet. I don't think we can answer definitively, and I'm going to use a Wichita and Kansas City, Kansas. As Kansas City, Kansas came back to school, I think April fifth full-time. How many kids are we still not seeing come back to school? So, the, engaging is going to be really difficult if we find out. Boy, we're still missing ten percent or fifteen percent of the kids. Uh, now, that doesn't mean we're not going to have some issues, Jim, in some other areas, but of the state. But though, I mean, that district's been out the most. Now, conversely, Kansas City, Kansas, per pupil gets the most money because of the poverty formula. But in terms of how do we engage them, Jim? It will be available to schools, it will, we'll try to market it ourselves. They will market it also through chambers and directly to parents. Uh, they've had really good success in the Riley Potawatomi County in their early runs with it. But that, that'll be a challenge.
Because the next challenge is accountability.
Yes.
I said this yesterday, you know, and I'll say it again. How are we going to hold people accountable? Because, you know, right now, the legislature wants us.
They want the money.
They want the money, okay? And we're saying, we know how to use the money. Well, in a couple of years, it's going to be, did we know how do we, did we really know how to use the money? You know, accountability, you know?
So, so I'm going to answer that, and this is not to be flippant.
I know.
But, but it's, it's real. This is federal money that primarily goes directly to school districts, ninety percent. And then, once we true up another, you're really looking at anywhere from ninety-two and a half to ninety-eight percent going directly to school districts. The federal government will audit these school districts. You know when they're going to audit them? Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So, I don't know, Ben, how many superintendent changes you've had in your region this year? How many will you have by the time twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six come? And now you're auditing a whole different group of people that were there when these decisions were made. That's why we set up the task force, okay, for the accountability. There's, this is not any dollar of state money. Now, that, that doesn't mean the state legislature shouldn't ask the same questions you're asking, right? What's the accountability? That's why part of this is statewide assessment. What we found in, in the, when, when the pandemic, when we had to suspend the state assessment, we had no way to tell you what the learning loss was. This would give us some indication and it would give us the subskills. So, Michelle and I have conversations probably more frequently than she'd like about dyslexia. Uh, and, you know, these would start to give the screener and the subskills of that. That would give you some statewide data that you don't currently have. I can just tell you, if we do this work right, it is the greatest opportunity we've had in my lifetime.
Oh, I agree.
But we have to do it right.
The greatest opportunity with the resources that are present.
Yes.
And it, that's what's going to drive it, but that's what's going to, I just, I've said it enough. Accountability is, is going to be a big issue.
Well, to follow up on that, uh, you know, in five years, uh, whenever these audits, or three or four years, whenever these audits take place, the credibility of the public education system's on the line. And, uh, and, you know, we have to do everything we can, uh, to help people understand that, uh, that that is the case. And if this, if this opportunity is blown, uh, that's going to be audited and determined. I mean, and it may not be our deal, but it's individual schools. We have to make sure that message is clear. You have to make a difference. Uh, Betty, I told her I blocked her, but I'll let her talk.
Actually, um, Jim had touched really on a concern that I had, which was that equity piece to be sure that we are reaching that targeted, uh, uh, area. You actually brought that up and I thank you, but, uh, the other thing that really uh, kind of concerns me is do we actually establish any kind of outcomes for these, uh, partners? Because when you talk about, um, do we hold them accountable? Then there has to be some standards, and I'm wondering, you know, where those standards are.
So, the metrics, so the big metric is, in any of these funds, whether it's private or public, I want you to think of two things. First question, was it caused or did it get exposed because of the pandemic? Did this occur because of the pandemic? Building a weight room was not caused by the pandemic. We've had that, it's kind of, I built a weight room. No. All right, that's first. Then, if it was caused or exposed, for example, we, oh, we learned, we, we lost twenty percent of the kids. We learned that, right? Then, Betty, you have to use the categories of which the federal government lays out. So, that's the general accountability. Now, if you go to the specific, we'll have to have metrics for each of these RFPs that we have to write for Boys and Girls Clubs. Here's, we want you to serve X amount of kids, we want a result of the activities that are done. We want, we want, uh, to know how many kids were served in these communities, those type of things, uh, leading to that.
And just to follow up real quickly, um, because I'm not sure where this would fit. The pandemic exposed the fact that those that struggle with learning, technology has left them way behind. Uh, there were a, a number of students, and I, I would use, um, Wichita as an example, that really did not understand, um, technology. Um, that was exposed by the pandemic and further that they come from families who don't really understand technology. And that kind of concerned me because that is an area where I, I, I don't know if you'd say the learning loss occurred because of the pandemic or it was exposed because of the pandemic. And if that is a significant area, because if down the road, we're faced with something like this again, what have we, what did we do to make sure that the structure was in place? That this gap was not as huge as it apparently is?
So, yes, so, i- if you remember in our visit in Wichita, just to speak specifically about what they did, they didn't have enough computers or laptops to even send home. So, they had to purchase all that. Then they had to go through training with staff. And then, of course, as you said, that impacted some parents that said, we don't know how to do this. So, what Wichita did, they actually had virtual days in person, if you remember, early on, where they were training kids. Now, what, what, on the other side of this, and I don't want to lose track of this, Melanie will say, and it appears about ten percent of, of students did better. Now, and again, it varies a little bit by community, but it appears, even Alicia would say, we got some kids that did better. And now, how do we take advantage of that, right, coming out of this? There are laws that don't allow us to do much outside of a pandemic, and we've got to rethink that so that we get to this individual plan for every kid. So, yes, I mean, remember, ninety percent of the money is setting at a school district level. And they have to just ask those two questions. And then it'll be up to the task force first, and then you second, to say, yes, you spent it in accordance with the law, uh, and in the priorities of the state board, and then you'll see all those. So, Betty, I, I don't know that I have a good answer for that, but every school district's going to have to examine that. And I know when we said in Wichita they have, and I know when we said in Blue Valley, they clearly said, this is how we're going to use the money. And so, that, that, but I, but I've said this, we're going through the private school money right now. Friday, the task force will vote on those, then you'll see them on the nineteenth. About twenty percent of what they've asked for are not allowable by law. What percent do you think's going to happen on the public school side? It's going to be twenty or thirty percent that we're going to have to work with on that, to make sure it's appropriate to the law. And then, another layer, as Jim said, we've got to be accountable to really make an impact, right, going forward. It just not be within the law, let's go make an impact with the money that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Randy. It's really helpful. Um, yesterday you mentioned one million dollars for reach back to the twenty twenty class. What category was that in?
It's in the, uh, administration funds. The post-secondary transition. Right, right on the screen, Ann, top one.
Yeah, I was looking at this, so this one isn't really.
Yeah, it's more general, yes.
But it's under administration?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and then, um, the.
That's class of twenty-one, twenty.
Twenty and twenty-one, okay.
Trying to help that coordination. In fact, I think we have a meeting on that this week, don't we, Brad?
I was going to say, who's, who's going to be in charge of that? I mean, is it KSTE staff going to help or is it going to?
Yes, our staff, but I mean, it's, it's involving counselors a great deal.
Yeah, it's a big effort. The other thing, the eight million for, I assume you had eight million for, um, after school and eight million for summer?
Yes.
So, was there, the eight million for summer, that includes both the community-based programs and the experiences?
That's every, that's all three categories.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
There's no particular split, we're just kind of, kind of see.
Right, so, so I want you to think about this, so it's those three categories through twenty-four, so it's multiple years in those three categories.
My only question was, I know every district out there is working on summer camp of some kind. How are we going to be sure that we don't cross over what they're doing? Because I'm sure they're calling Boys and Girls Clubs and all kinds of people.
Well, and that's, that's why it's got, we've got to coordinate that as we go back and do RFPs. Because let's just take, um, Goddard. So, let's say Goddard has said, you know what, we've got a YMCA, I don't know if that's true, but we've got a YM, let's use Andover because I know they have one. We, we're, we're coordinating with the YMCA, then we don't need to send that YMCA more money. Or Brett may say, Randy, if, if the YMCA's across Kansas, including mine, get that money, I could use mine in a different way. But we have to coordinate that.
Right.
And that's why they're, they're planning for this summer right now.
Yeah.
And, you know, so we've got to start doing this work. And our work's going to take longer because Brett White can pick up the phone and start working. We've got to go through a statewide process of vetting all this money before it comes back to you.
So, our summer stuff may get somewhat pushed out more next year?
Yeah.
Which would make sense.
I'll tell you what we really want to try to hit is this. If we could hit these by the time we start school in August, I say, yeah, that's a big lift because we got to RFP a lot of stuff. But if we could start doing that, then we could start to deliver training and statewide assessment for districts. Again, in those big counties first and then spread that out throughout the state and get that going. But I don't, it is going to be hard for us to do much with this money this summer.
Yeah.
We might be able to do a little bit, but it's going to be hard.
Is K U going to be able to deliver any new interims by fall? Brad's shaking his head, yeah.
I told you, when we get in the weeds, I'm going to look to Brad because he's had meetings with them.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's, this is complex with a lot of different moving parts.
Melanie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, this is a very significant dollar amount. And so, to that end, you and the department, Brad, have done a lot of work behind the scenes that I think the general public and folks watching on YouTube don't get to see. So, I, I do sit in those Thursday calls that you had with the superintendents, and I had the opportunity to go to Blue Valley with you and talk with the staff there, the superintendent. And I, I appreciate all of the work that's being done to ensure that schools aren't going to spend in the wrong areas and then be faced with an audit that they have to pay back later. My question for you would be, if twenty percent of private schools are asking for things that don't qualify, we don't know yet what that's going to look like on the public side as they're making their decisions. What, what other hurdles are going to come up that we're not yet hearing about? And how do we ensure that a district that's getting a significant amount of title funding? And, and therefore, what's essentially a very big check? How do we know that they need that money, that they're going to be able to use it in a way that's truly impactful? I'm looking for the disparities between the haves and the have-nots as far as what these districts have and how the title funds come into play here. Does that make sense?
Yes, so you've asked a lot of complex questions that are really appropriate, Melanie. So, you can't say, two things that have struck me through the pandemic. How very diverse our state is, all right? I mean, we've been out of school for over a calendar year. Ninety percent of Kansas schools have been in session the entire year. But there's one district that wasn't in session at all, and many others were hybrid. So, when I make a statement, I don't want to try to, it's very complex because every district looks different. And I've been thinking a lot, if I'm setting, if Brad's still setting at Cheney or I'm setting in McPherson, I'm viewing that from my, from my lens, right? And we probably would have, uh, McPherson was hybrid, but in person most of the time. I think Cheney was in person most of the time, but that was not Betty's experience. That was not your experience, right? So, but it was, for the most part, and with the exception of Topeka, uh, five oh one, for the most part. So, the money that was given was the federal government saying, there's a pandemic. This was both administrations. The President Trump and President Biden shipped the money. In fact, President Trump shipped S R one and S R two, President Biden shipped S R three. Now, with legislative support, it's a one-size-fits-all, right? It's based on the Title I formula and every state got those allocations. Every state was very different. In March of this year, March, early March, thirty-four percent of American kids were not in school. And ninety percent of Kansas kids were in school. So, we didn't trend that way. So, our, our loss generally, Melanie, is not as great as other states, I don't believe. But it is in Kansas City, probably is in Wichita. But our opportunity, as Jim said, to really use this to our advantage to come out of this even better is where I think we have to look at. And that's what I think we saw in Blue Valley. Here's how we're going to try to target. And they're one of the districts that gets the least amount of money because they have the least amount of poverty. So, I don't know if I'm answering your question, so please ask more. But that's why we have an opportunity to really make an impact on the science of reading across the state, on the science of math, to really take a look at what you just heard from Wamigo and Circle and those, and Butler County, to really move IPS and do those things well. And we have the money in every community to do it. Challenges, in our small schools, they don't have the personnel to do this effectively. You know, you got a superintendent principal and a lot of jeans area, and there, we got a call yesterday or Brad got an email saying, I'm overwhelmed. This was not a small, this is a medium-sized district. I got all this reporting I got to do, I got all this accountability. That's the biggest challenge. That coupled with, you know, um, some districts have a lot of money, Kansas City, Kansas. Wichita, some districts don't have as much. Which, some districts don't have as much, DeSoto. And so how's, you know, how are they going to use that money? Does that help?
It does, I've got a follow-up there.
Okay.
So for those districts that are getting true-up funds, can you share with us just a little bit of the feedback that you've gotten from the superintendents? And whether those funds are sufficient for what they need?
Uh, sufficient, no. No. It came from those superintendents that would be getting the true-up money. I mean, I mean, Tanya's the one that called me initially, and said, Randy, have you thought about this? And that, you know, we said, that's a really good idea, because there's no adequacy, so we started looking at the amount. We gave every dollar we could in the discretionary money to do that. I mean, we gave every dollar. In, in SRR two, it was almost, if you go back, there, I mean, special ed, because that was asked for, and that went to every school district on the same formula. But then the rest of it went to the true-up, but because we had nine and a half percent. And the two and a half percent, we gave almost all that to, to bring that up to six hundred dollars. So I think, you know, when we looked at that initially, Tanya and I had a conversation, she said in SRR two, I can't run summer school for the amount of money that we're getting. So we had to do something there. Uh, and I don't know that there were any other state even looking at that. But for Kansas, that just wasn't fair at all. So, we'd like to make it more, but we don't have the discretionary funds to raise it any greater. If we'd had more flexibility, we probably could have done something there. But SRR three had different stipulations on it.
Thank you.
I, I just had a, a sort of a quick question, if, if the amount of money that's being given for learning loss, um, to the districts. How, how do we measure the learning gain we, we would hope to see from that? Is that through those interim assessments, through state assessments? Will we, we look at this in the future? Because I think, looking at what we, um, receive from that money, is part of the accountability aspect of it.
So Jean, let's just, let's just use Scott City, Jamie out of Scott City. So we would look at it, state assessment, we're, we're going to get results in May, mid-May, to late May. That's going to be compared back to nineteen, not twenty, because we didn't do it. The interim assessments that KU's, we already have them, make them more robust. And then this new assessment, that districts are already giving. So MAP assessment, or Fast Bridge, or Dibbles, or Ames Web. We would have statewide data that we could then start to measure from the subskill to the standard and competency level. Uh, at no cost to those districts. That, that would be the way that we would have to look at it. So if you look at Scott City, outside of some quarantine times, they were in school the entire time. So you would think that their learning loss would be much less than those that were interrupted. But we won't know that for sure till we get their state assessment results back, and then look back to nineteen. Specific to that, um, a, a new requirement for state assessments this year. Is we have to disaggregate and report by subgroup, learning loss and gain as a result of the pandemic. Now that's just with the state assessment, all states. But that's something that our research team is already prepared for, as soon as the assessment is over. This summer, we'll start looking at disaggregating, to find out, were there subgroups that were, you know? But, so that's something new that we, that we haven't had to do as a requirement under the federal government in the past, but we will this year.
The money for summer school and after-school programs, is that, how is that going to be distributed from a, from an equity basis? Or, or is that a part of the equation? The thing that concerns me is that, if we assume that the schools that have, where they've been the greatest learning loss. Are the schools that have been hybrid or remote most of the time. Some of those are the big, more affluent schools.
Correct.
And.
And some are not, they're combination, but they're most, they're more likely to be large, that would, that's be, would be in common.
And they're likely to be the ones with the YMCA's.
And boys and girls clubs, yes, and, and lots of libraries and rec commissions.
So there is not going to be a disincentive, uh, because of wealth, for those distributions?
No. Uh, and if you take out four H, it probably tends to lean more to what would be the Abilene size and greater.
Okay, because I know in Fredonia, we have a library, we have four H, and whatever the next one is.
But West Elk doesn't.
Yeah.
See, so you're, that's that mid-size.
They would have probably four H.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, they're going to be limited compared to Fredonia. So, and the larger you get, the more opportunities you would have, but then you've got more people trying to access those, so it, it plays both ways.
Now, sometimes when you ask the questions, people think you're advocating for a position, I am not, I'm just asking this for information purposes. Of the, uh, learning loss, uh, category. Could any of that be spent in the discretionary, uh, tune-up?
Has to be spent on learning loss.
Okay.
So we talked about yesterday, remember, districts get ninety percent of the money, twenty percent has to be in learning loss. So, we kicked around, do we want to open that up for grants to come in and say, we'd like to do the X? We don't have the staff to be able to do that, so we thought it was more appropriate, and so did the, the groups that gave feedback, Jim. To use that for statewide training and statewide assessment, because then that equates to whether you're small or large. If I'm Brian Smith in Columbus, I don't have to pay for the assessment, I can, I can, you're going to pay for it. If you're, um, if you're Tiffany Anderson in Topeka, it's the same ratio. So that's, that's why the groups thought that was a better use than going competitive, like the Twenty First Century Learning Grants, and then some winners and some losers and that. Everyone got to share in that.
Well, specifically on the learning loss, I, and then, and this is an advocacy position. Uh, the, the dyslexia task force asks for some specific things that are, that are included in that. For instance, statewide training, uh, are, you know, and they ask for funds for this. Training for science of reading, which is there. And what I especially liked, what you said yesterday, this is also specifically in the dyslexia task force recommendations, is that there was training for professors, so.
And, and the people, and the students that are pre-professional also.
And, and so that, you know, is, is an area, so.
So again, if you look at number of teachers, Shawnee Mission has more teachers than Altoona Midway. So who gets more impact? Well, they both get an equal impact, but one has greater, is going to use a greater amount of that budget. Shawnee Mission's going to use a greater amount of that total dollar, because they just have more staff.
And it is your assumption that the money allocated for, like, letters training, is adequate for every teacher in Kansas that wants to take it, or that needs to take it?
It will be after Brad and I, and I'm sure that our letters people are listening. So it will be after we try to negotiate this. Remember what I said, we believe, we don't know, we believe. That Windot, Johnson, Douglas, Shawnee, and Sedgwick have been disproportionately affected because they have been more in hybrid and remote than other counties. We would start in those counties and then expand throughout the state, as the dollars allow. So we, we fully hope we can get to everyone. But that's where we would start, where also most of the students are. But we want to make sure we don't neglect, um, Beloit, you know? So we're going, Brad and I are going to work on that, but that's, that's the work yet to be done.
Well, I want to thank you for the work, this is, yeah, it boggles my mind to be able to spend this much money, you know? It's, it's more than I've ever considered, and you know, and no, no good deed ever goes unpunished. And, you know, everybody's trying to do the right thing, and everybody else has opinions. So I want to, I want to express appreciation to the people that have worked hard on this, and knowing that, uh, there'll be people that appreciate what we're doing, and those people that have other suggestions. But we've got to try to do the best we can. Janet, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me see, I don't know if I'm going to ask this correctly, but my biggest concern is, of course, the learning loss, I recognize that's huge. But even bigger than that are these students we can't find, who have not shown up. Wouldn't that also be an impact on the learning loss? And how are we going to find these students? I mean, because that is frightening, because I think that probably Betty and I are going to have the most, you know? I mean, and that's frightening to me.
Yes, and so Janet, I don't know that we're going to do much at the state level with the dollars we have for that. That's going to have to be the local district on how they're going to attack that. Because, again, as I mentioned, Kansas City, Kansas per pupil is going to have more money, um, than equivalent-sized school district. But I think we both have heard some anecdotal, that there's some fairly significant, we can't find the kids, right? As they've come back, they didn't come back.
Right.
We don't know where they're at. That's going to have to be done locally. We will support that, we will encourage the use of money for those activities. But there's no state set aside money directly to go to that. From, from our, I mean, it would go to training of the teaching staff, and would go to the assessment. So they would have to use their local money if we went forward. Because the, the opposite side of that, Janet, if we did that statewide, I would guess Ben would say, it's not been a problem in Sterling, Randy, it's not been a problem in Great Bend, it's not been, and that's true. This is why so diff, so difficult when we look statewide, because we, we've really been impacted much differently. I mean, it's always been different in Kansas, but this really had some differences to it.
Well, to me, we're going to probably have to get some other agencies in here to help us find these kids.
Yes, your DCF.
The schools, you know, I mean.
Right.
Though we'll have to do that, but, okay, well, that, that's my biggest concern, but I would also like to echo what, uh, our chair just said. I would like to thank every person's department, I know how you guys have done in Yelman's job. But I'd also like to thank our local districts, because they are, they're the ones that are going to have to spend this. And they are, I know how hard they're working to make sure they do it properly, and I have a lot of faith in them too. So, anyway, this is exciting times, and it's scary times, and as I said in the beginning, or you said, I believe, we don't see this as a challenge, we see this as an opportunity. And I believe that's what everyone's doing.
Dale said this this morning, Janet. Um, and we, he was talking about superintents retiring. It's, when you think about your work as mission-driven and not a job, I think we have the majority of people see that in Kansas. So, you know, I feel good about what we're going to do. This is, this is a huge undertaking, and I think all of you've indicated the issues that we have, in trying to figure out how to do this money. Uh, and there's not a template in the past to look at, there's not a protocol. Every one of these funds has different allocations to it, and it will strain every one of our school districts, and, and to do this work well.
It will, it will, so thank you to all of you.
As we go through the learning loss, uh, contracts, uh, if, uh, if they come in, if the bids come in, if, if you and Brad are successful negotiators, uh, as we expect. And the bids come in less than that, then we could consider other options.
Yes.
I, I have concerns for that, for those pockets of students. Uh, and, and, and this is, this, this is different for my area, so I'm looking, this is a statewide area, not just my area, because this doesn't apply to my area. Those pockets of students who, who were out of school, who are struggling, but who were in schools that are not getting a lot of support, because they're wealthy. Uh, and I would like to, if we have money available at the end, I would like to at least consider putting some of that into the tune-up.
And let me, let me tell you another area that I mentioned on the Zoom right at the end, Melanie. Here's, here's what no one's thinking about, that we clearly see with the private school money. Almost, public and private, you know what the number one thing they want to do is hire people. There won't be enough people to hire. There won't be enough people to hire. So what's going to happen, they're going to have to rethink that, which means there's also going to be money that comes back in, that has to be looked at differently over the next two or three years. Large amounts of money. And we're, and both on the private side and the public side, meaning not taking it from the private to the public, rethinking how to do that. And we would come back and rethink that.
Well, Mr. McNeese has another question, but I think probably he's also thinking about, maybe this would be a good time to come out of retirement. Go ahead, Jim.
Oh, no, 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 no. Retirement is not overrated. Mr. Chair, I think it's appropriate, we make a motion. And I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the prioritizing.
Uh, we have a motion on the table.
Oh, you do?
This is left over from yesterday, so we have to, we have to.
I apologize, Dina.
We have to, with the, uh, help of our attorney, figure out the, well, thank you, Randy.
Well, I think it's time we make a motion.
I think we're ready to move on. Uh, first of all, we have a motion on the table, do we need a motion to take it off the table?
Yesterday, as I recall the motion, you had a specific time when that motion was going to be taken up on the agenda.
Yeah, and we are at that point right now.
So I think you, I think at the point where the, the chair can bring that motion up, and then I know Ms. Law had some, some follow-up clerical changes to that.
Yeah, we, we apparently made an incorrect motion yesterday, that was not exactly what we wanted to do. So at this time, I'm going to ask Janet to make a substitute motion, uh, that will replace the one that was made yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, do we need to vote on the substitute, I mean, on the tabling first?
I think it's a point of work to bring up the call that motion to the table for discussion that was tabled yesterday.
Okay, tell me specifically what I need to do.
You just, just announce that you're bringing that, uh, that motion to the, to the attention of.
In that case, we are bringing up the, we are bringing up the table motion, because this is the appropriate time that was announced yesterday. So since that is now on the table and ready for discussion, it is time for Janet to make the substitute motion.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, I would like to, uh, due to clerical reasons, I would like to make a substitute motion. I would move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve prioritizing the SRR three ten percent set aside money through 2024. And once again, I apologize for making the error, thank you.
Do you second that motion yesterday? Okay, do you second that motion? Okay, that motion's been made, and second, Ann?
Um, I don't think the motion indicated how it would be spent, don't we want to say we're going to spend it like the commissioner indicated? It just says we're going to spend it.
Want to come to us?
Mr. Chair, if I may, as, as I recall, the final expenditure is going to come back to us before it's actually spent, correct? So this is just guidance and a framework.
This is the, you're, you're approving the framework as I presented with the contracts to come back.
Okay, I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve prioritizing the SRR three percent state aside, set aside, set aside money through 2024. I, in my opinion.
As presented.
As presented, so it'll be similar to what the, the task force presents on the districts.
But your motion didn't have as presented, did it?
Oh, it didn't have as presented, well, it's not in there, so.
So we need to say that?
So, as presented.
As presented.
Presented, that's the.
Dina.
Say yes. Uh, we're going to add as presented to the motion. Do you still second that?
Chairman, if you're going to be voting on whether or not to approve the motion to substitute, and then you're making a vote on the substitute motion.
Okay, then I will change my motion to, I approve that we, I move that we approve a substitute motion.
Is that correct? So we vote to approve the, to allow the substitute motion, and then we vote on the substitute motion, does everybody understand that? Do you second, do you second all that stuff, Dina?
Whatever.
We are voting now to accept the substitute motion. We're not voting on the substitute motion, we're voting to accept it. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
All in favor, raise your hand.
All opposed.
Now we're voting on the actual motion. And I'm going to support the motion, but it's just like everything else, this is so big that I'm uncomfortable. But I'm going to do it anyway, because I think it's, I think we need to be able to move forward and make some plans. So all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed. Motion carries nine to one. Thank you, sir. We will start the chairman's report at this time. And the first thing is to act on travel. And I have three things to add. Peggy, I told Peggy about it, but it needs to be on your list. First of all, I'm meeting with the Green Bush Superintendents tomorrow. Saturday, the Women for Kansas Independence Branch. And on the 22nd, I'm going to be attending CAC. Any other board travel additions? Jean?
Yes, I have an Advantage Kansas Coordinating Council meeting, and I, I think it's the. Dr. Watson, do you recall what the next date of the full meeting was?
I am not sure.
Talking about Advantage Kansas?
Yeah, I think it was the Wednesday of our, our next board meeting.
I think we indicated early this morning that we can't be there because of the School for the Blind and Deaf. And so Kelly Byrne was looking at some additional times to meet.
Okay, for whenever that is. I also have opportunity, the Opportunity Committee meetings, which are just virtual on the 16th and the 22nd of this, this month. Yes, it is.
Yep.
Dina?
I need to correct the executive board meeting is not virtual. For KESHA, it's on, it's in person. And also, the Board of Directors meeting is just right after the Executive Board meeting. So I will be attending it as well, only it will be virtually. Probably in the KESHA boardroom. But anyway, I just thought that needed to be corrected.
Anybody else? Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Peggy, I think I gave you a couple. April 26th, there'll be the Advantage Kansas Jump Start Subcommittee. Then I don't know, either the 27th or 28th, we're going to have Talent Ready. Then sometime in May, we'll have the big meeting, but probably don't know. And then May 24th will be Jump Start again. And I don't know yet if they'll be virtual or in person.
Betty?
Yeah, I wanted to add on the, the sixth, we met with 259 and the commissioner with. And then on the eighth, their Legislative Liaison for 259. And then on the 16th, it will be virtual, but Zoom, it's whole child, whole child meeting as well.
Anybody else? If not, a motion would be in order to approve the travel. Jim and Dina? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve the navigating change that were presented to us yesterday. Is there? I'll go ahead and make that motion. I move to accept the updates to the navigating change document reflected changes and new information since the board approval on February the 9th. Betty seconds that motion. Any discussion? Are you voting or discussing, Dina? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Nine to one, motion carries. At this time, we designate people to represent the State Board of Education at the graduations of the School for the Blind and the Deaf. We customarily ask the liaison, the liaisons have the first, first refusal. So, and then other people if they are unable to be there. So first of all, Melanie, are you able to do that for the School for the Blind? And Michelle, are you able to do that for the deaf? So you will be our designated people. However, any other board members can attend and are encouraged to attend those activities. And if you are, please let Peggy know. At this point, we will have reports from committees, starting with the Policy Committee. Jean?
We were planning to have a policy committee at lunchtimes, probably every other month to go over and review the, the policy guidance in a, in a more continuous way so that we can make sure that, that everything is the way that we want it. And we did make some changes yesterday that we were going to recommend regarding how we handle change, taking something off the consent agenda. But I think that will be coming out shortly. So I didn't know if we wanted to, to, I don't have the language right with me.
We're having a little trouble hearing you.
I don't have the language right with me for that, but I think maybe Peggy can get that out and we can consider that at the next meeting. Right, we still had a little bit of more work on that. So we will be meeting again next month at lunch.
And I want to make sure that I thank the people on the Policy Committee and assure you that I'm glad you were there, and I'm not.
Me too.
Communications, Melanie and Jim. I understand we've got some exciting things planned.
Oh, truly, we do. First of all, before we have the unplanned, the plan that's being operationalized right now, I want to thank Melanie for her leadership there, but Denise and Peggy also for their help. They have put together the postcards and they're, they're excellent. I'm very pleased with them. And Melanie, would you like to speak to that?
I think that we've shared all of those postcards on social media as the weeks go by. And we've got one more planned for the session coming up here in a few weeks.
Great job, thank you very much. Melanie's taken the lead on that and done a great job. One of the outreach opportunities that we have been working on is to continue as the pandemic subsides, our visits to different parts of the state. We have an upcoming visit scheduled for next fall in terms of dates, and I want to make sure I do this, because I just looked at what I had written down and don't think that's correct. Yes, I was wrong. Okay. If you look at your calendars, we are organizing a, a, a visit to Northwest Kansas for September 27th, 28th, and 29th of next fall. Obviously, Randy's calendar was a driver in that, as well as Mr. Porter. We want to always make sure our chair can attend. There are two things about this trip that I think are very important to Northwest Kansas. One is, we don't have a lot of participation, and this is not a, a slam at, at Northwest Kansas, but we don't have a lot of participation in some of our programs and activities. And you know what? I understand it. It, it's a long ways out there. Topeka is not that close to Goodland, you know, or to Stockton. But we do have some great efforts going on in schools like Stockton and the redesign and others that we need to support. So I think we need to reach out to Northwest Kansas more than to complain about them not being connected to us. It's on, it behooves us to make the move to go find out what's happening out there. There's great stuff and, and connect. So we're looking at putting a trip together. We're working with Jean, and that's her district, as well as with Randy and, and Mr. Porter to put this together. But if you would look at your, your dates, the 27th, 28th in September, that's what we're looking at. Now, because it is out there, we're probably going to have some transportation issues. Some people might want a carpool and things like that. But similar to other trips, and for those of you who are new, that we've done is typically we come in on one day late in the day or in the middle of the day, stay overnight, have a full day the next day, stay overnight in one of the communities, have an early morning and through the, the day. And, and some of our, our trips between communities could be hour, hour and a half transportation. You know, that's the experience of being in Northwest Kansas, as well as Southwest Kansas, you know? And, and to understand how vast Jean's area is. And she does a marvelous job of staying connected in Northwest Kansas. So we'll be working on that. Also, Betty and I had the opportunity to meet with Alicia Thompson, Superintendent at USD 259, and her administrative team. And Betty and I were quite happily surprised by an invitation from Wichita Public Schools to visit. That's great. I mean, we, we have been down several years ago. The board was there, and, but there's quite a few members that are new that were not part of that visit we took. But even that visit was more generalized visit. We didn't specifically target or look at USD 259. USD 259 has particular challenges, unique successes, and we need to go and, and see them and there, where they are. And I see these as two bookends in terms of the communications team that we're in rural and, and a very diverse and very large area of population, excuse me, of area, but not a large population. Well, this is a condensed area with a lot of population and a lot of programs. And it behooves us to be able to recognize the differences and the uniqueness and the, and the exceptionalities of our different areas. So we're looking at that. I was hoping and talked to Randy and others and, and about getting together here in, in not too distant future. But I, I, there's just so many things coming up. I, I'm going to recommend that we look at the spring of this next year to visit USD 259. So I will work with their representatives and Betty to, and, and Randy to look at next spring, what we can do. Doesn't mean that there's lots of stuff going on, especially as we come out of the pandemic. You know, but I would hope that we would learn a great deal about the diversity and the uniqueness and the greatness of our state by both going to Northwest Kansas and to visit Wichita. You know, so those are two things that are coming up that we'll get to, get with you. So the dates of September 27th, 28th, and 29th will be for the Northwest Kansas visit. And I don't want to announce places we've got, we're going to go to because we just don't have that together. And we don't want to, I guess, raise expectations or, or scare people. So we'll get those dates. And we'll be looking for spring dates as well, you know, for Wichita. So thank you. I'm open for questions if you have any or observations or.
Observation is that, you know, as a, as a schoolperson, I was pretty aware of the area of my state, the area that I represent, because I lived there, I worked there for a long time. But if we accept our mission that we want to lead the world in the success of each student, we know that each, there are places in our state that are different. And if we are going to represent these students of Kansas, I think it's important for us to be in places in Kansas. So I would urge each of us to, it, it, I, I think it's very important for each of us to be there in these areas. And so I would, I would encourage everybody, because you can't make anybody do anything, but I would encourage everybody to put these on, on your schedule so that we can be there to support those schools, both the large school in Wichita and the smaller schools and, and Northwest Kansas. Because if we recognize there are differences and that one size doesn't fit all, we need to actually observe that. We have Student Voice and Advantage Kansas Coordinating Council, and Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a really good meeting with KESHA's student.
You need to get closer to the mic.
Closer, okay. Yeah, we had a very good virtual meeting. Betty and Melanie and I met with KESHA's Student Advisory Council, and we had some questions for them, and they were very engaging. And there's a report on that in your folder, so you can see the feedback that we got from the students. I don't know if Betty and Melanie want to make a comment?
Thank you, Anne. We did have a wonderful meeting with that group. They were mostly remote, and so we got to see everyone over Zoom. But I just really appreciate them taking the time, and thank you for setting that up so that we could all be there virtually. It's not an easy year to get feedback and inputs from students, so that was very helpful.
One of the things that I've always enjoyed is hearing from students. We can set outcomes and, and we can look at all kinds of different things. But we don't really know that it works until we hear from our students. So I always take pleasure in the opportunity of Student Voice to hear what we're doing that worked and, and maybe what we should review. So Anne, I thank you for setting that up as well. I enjoyed it.
Anything additional from KESHA, Dina or Jim? We'll start with you. KESHA?
Which one I was to talk about? KESHA will be basically looking at rules. And some of those rules affect fans. And also the wearing of masks. So we will be dealing with that at, first, the Executive Board, and then the Board of Directors will make the final decision. So that's basically what's occurring.
Okay, are there any other committees that I've missed? Seeing none, the Commissioner's Task Force on S R. We have talked about S R a lot today. We are meeting, as already been told, this, we meet every Friday at three. It's virtual, virtually, everybody attends. It's been very, very well attended. Janet also serves on that committee. We will be approving, are voting on all of the Eames funding this Friday, and that will come to us next Monday. And then from that point on, we will start the S R. And I understand there's already been some applications, so we'll start that process at that point. This is a difficult call for me, because it's, it's going to take us a little while to get through. Maybe 30 or 45 minutes, I would guess. So let's take a 10-minute break at this point. That includes Mr. Jones? And as soon as we can get his attention, it's time for the Board Attorney's Report.
Read last, this last week. So unless somebody has questions, I'll pass. I did give you two monthly reports in terms of February and March. So if there's any questions on that, other than what I put in writing and reported to you yesterday?
Well, if I knew we were going to be that brief, we may not have needed a break. At this time, future agenda items. And I want to follow up on something that Jim said. I know that we've had discussions about in the future, we need to address relooking at the graduation requirements, but I would like to maybe see if it's practical to move that up some. Because I think that's, especially based on today's presentation, that's an important thing that we need to address. Maybe bring that into the 21st century from the 18th century. Betty?
Thank you. Actually, there are several things I made a note on.
A little closer to the mic, please.
Starting with the agenda, and this is just a suggestion, and I'll use the discussion on ESER funds as an example. And I was very appreciative of Ben requesting that we, we bring, push that forward to today, simply because there are times we have a system overload with information. There were a lot of questions and a great deal of discussion. And it brings me to my point that our agenda is packed. We have lots of things that we need to cover. And I would appreciate it if we would look at some options, either such as extending the length of our meetings, or maybe those things that require more attention to separate them. There has to be options where we have an opportunity to look at the items, vet those items, or ask questions. And that's a big concern for me, especially after yesterday. It's not as though, I doubt that the Commissioner hasn't vetted everything and looked at everything and is bringing to us a solid proposal. But for us to be transparent, we all need the opportunity to go in-depth, uncover some of the wealth of information that perhaps he didn't bring up. So I would appreciate it if we would take a look at that. The second thing is to bring back a presentation on the restorative practices. It did not go unnoticed by me that students of color dominated the percentage of those that were in that system. And I would like a little more in-depth discussion where we can see perhaps what they have done to overcome obstacles, or how we can mirror that in the districts that really are larger. The idea, yes, we also had the presentation this morning on work keys, and everyone was really excited, including me. But I would like when we, before we look at mandates, that maybe we can target our larger school districts. One of their big concerns is that they are being, number one, overwhelmed with unfunded mandates. Number two, that they cannot effectively put those things in place as quickly as a smaller school district. It's important that when we look at things to impact the students of Kansas, that we are talking about all. And to have some input from those larger districts on how we can make this successful really is important. The final thing, I don't know if there's a way that we can do this, but I think when we look at the initiatives, and a lot of great things have been presented, to also have some information to show the outcome, or if that needle has been moved, to represent the area of students that are struggling, that may take a little bit of time, but if that's something that we can take into consideration, I would appreciate it. And that covers all of my list.
Thank you. I want to follow up on the first recommendation that you made. I felt, unless you're sitting in this chair, you probably don't pay attention to time. And you have to here, and we have not even been close to on time. And I've actually, either two or three times, this, today and yesterday, I've had to cut off debate, or cut off discussion, where, where others may have had things to say. So I strongly support looking at options and alternatives. I've suggested, I think since I first got on this board, that I don't see why we need to be married to noon on Wednesday. That seems to me to be a logical way to do that, and then give people that are presenting more time. But, but let me suggest that, I don't know if this would be appropriate or not, but let me suggest that maybe alternatives could come from the Policy Committee. And at some point in the, in the pretty near future, that, that you could look at alternative suggestions and do that. Because that's, you know, when I was sitting down there next to Janet, when she was causing trouble, and instead of in this chair, I didn't worry too much about time. But here, you know, I'm acutely aware of it, and every time, every time the time's up and I see four people listed on here, I think, oh, crap, we're not going to get through today. And that should not be the consideration. The consideration should be what's best for the kids of Kansas, not what time do we have lunch. And so I appreciate that. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is just for future topics. I guess I want to dive in a little bit more about the, maybe in the future, maybe have him come present, present to us, but the licensing. He's a sub-teacher right now, but for ASL, just dive into that a little bit more. For ASL, for the teacher, for Mulletham.
American Sign Language?
Yes, yes. So just bring, just bring that to the attention and importance of that. And then we had talked, I believe, a month ago or two about bringing in students that have maybe created their own path, their own entrepreneurship, kind of went out on their own. Maybe they didn't test well or whatever, but they are very good at reaching out to their community and doing jobs and building their own little business. And we have a, we have a gentleman, a student that I'd love to bring from our area. I'm not sure. I think you talked about there are some others out there that you want to bring, bring forward to the board, and maybe have them do like a presentation rather than just talked about, but actually do a presentation for us. And that would probably have to be after school gets out, so maybe sometime.
And you, that is still on our list. That, that concept is on our list.
Okay, great.
And it's still under consideration. It will be done at some point.
Awesome. That's, I just wanted to bring that to the...
Thank you. Melanie?
Michelle, if you could email me or Peggy contact, the specific, because I know we've been working on that for future agenda items?
Like I said, probably it's easier if it's after, you know, the school's out. So, thank you.
Melanie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
There we go. I think I need to bring the mic down a little bit. This is going to be a mouthful, so bear with me. I'm going to read it so that I don't miss anything. But I would really like to hear from KSDE on the topic of screen time. So I want to talk about technology here for a minute. But with regards to screen time at different ages and levels of development, tablets versus laptops, and the appropriateness of those devices at grade level, and then access to content. So the liability of school districts to manage the domains and apps that students have access to, but also outside of that liability, just the appropriateness of some of the content that they can access. And then finally, parents' roles in device management, access, whether a family can shut down access to a certain distracting website, because some of the feedback that I'm getting throughout this pandemic is these devices are causing distractions. They're supposed to be the gateway to learning, but instead, students are using devices to do other things besides learn. And if a district is not managing that on their own, or giving parents or students even, the ability to kind of manage some of those distractions, then that can be a challenge. And then finally, I would love to hear about, maybe have a discussion about, and this may be outside of our purview, but I just want to put it on record, possibly the option for a family to opt out of device use, opt out of taking a device home, and potentially enrolling in a device-free class if they have younger elementary-age kids.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair might say that what Melanie just brought up may have to tag on to what Betty said. That probably is not going to be a 10-minute discussion, I would guess.
I was just getting ready to... I was just getting ready to kind of, kind of follow up on that. It sounds like, Betty, you made that recommendation just in time. Jean?
Yes, I believe we spoke about this earlier, but I think it would be helpful to have some more information on the status of implementing, implementing the Bullying Task Force recommendations and how that, that's going so far.
Okay, thank you. And Deana?
Thank you. I've recently had an opportunity to tour Starbase. I don't know how many of you have heard of it before. It's, it's federally funded through the Department of Defense, and there are five locations in Kansas, Kansas City, Topeka, Wichita, Salina, and Manhattan. And they serve fourth through sixth graders, for the most part, during the school year. And they have 25 hours of instruction in the areas of physics, energy, technology, engineering, math operations, and applications and STEM careers. So it's a pretty intense program, and I thought it'd be good for us to know what kind of resources there are for our school districts in those areas.
Thanks for bringing that for attention. It'll be on the list. And Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Knowing my district, this is something I've been intimately involved with, but to have a detailed conversation with colleges of education accreditation, processes, and expectations and outcomes, and, and those cycles, and how we fit our expectations on our prep programs, on teachers coming in to our vision for education in Kansas, and how we can, and merge those, I know we have, but to have that conversation as a board, because we do accredit those. It's always in our consent agenda, and so we don't talk about it very often, but to have that conversation about pairing those together and, and the processes that goes into that accreditation process.
Okay. Thank you very much. I see no other future agenda items, but that should take us through 2028. Many of us won't be here by then. We had the discussion yesterday, an executive session about response to legislative action, and there's been work done overnight, and so I don't believe it's necessary to have another executive session discussion at this point. But a motion would be in order, and I believe Deana is prepared to make a motion, and then we will ask for a second, and then we will further discuss that. So Deana?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that explanation, I move that the Kansas State Board of Education authorize the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board to provide information to Governor Laura Kelly on the Kansas State Board of Education standards regarding pending legislation. The Kansas State Board of Education's constitutional and statutory authority on these issues and the benefits to local boards of education and school districts to retaining the authority and oversight of the Board on these matters. And request Governor Kelly consider these matters in determining her response to the pending legislation, House Bill 2039, requiring students to pass a, my, my, just popped off. Okay.
Don't write that in the motion.
HB 2039 requiring students to pass an American civics test in order to graduate with a high school diploma, and requiring accredited high schools to provide a course of instruction in financial literacy. And SB, or SUB for House Bill 2089, standardizing firearm safety education training programs in school districts.
Thank you.
I will second the motion.
So Deana and Ben have made and seconded that motion. I want to thank Jean for working on this motion, and I am, I really like the language. I think it's, it's non-threatening, but it clearly identifies what we want to do. So at this point, discussion? Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Why are we not directly asking her to veto those bills? Instead of dancing all around, talk to her about it, suggest this, suggest that, why don't we tell her what we want?
I think that's implied.
Well, that's what I mean. It's implied, but we don't say it. It's like, guess what I'm thinking? I'm thinking you should veto it, but I'm not going to say it. That's the impression. So I just think the motion should say, not consider, but should veto those two bills. My thought.
Okay, that'll be up to the, up to the Board to make that decision. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to, and just to clarify, we aren't against any of those things.
As a matter of fact, we're for all that stuff.
I just want to make that very clear, that we are for all of those things here at the Board.
The only issue is that we believe it's our responsibility, not the legislature's responsibility. And yes, we strongly support civics education. We strongly support financial literacy. And we believe that, I mean, I'm speaking, you know, we believe that it's the option of the local school district, how they want to do firearm safety, but they don't need to be told exactly what they have to do. It's still their option.
Still their option, yes. And we can work with, we can work with, anyone that wants to come and work with the Board on that, we'll work together.
And we have
Done that in the past.
A multitude of examples of how we've done that in the past.
We just want to make that clear.
Okay, Betty?
And I appreciate your adding that on. I, I guess I'm wondering why that's not included. I didn't hear it, that we're not against this. We're against being told or being directed or legislature taking it upon themselves. I didn't hear that wording in the motion. Did I miss something?
No, I don't think, I don't think the wording is in the motion, but again, it's implied. And this is going to be presented in person to the Governor this afternoon by Janet and me, and we're going to make sure that that's part of the understanding.
Okay. Then I'm okay, because you're saying that you will add the additional verbiage so that you'll make that abundantly clear, and if that's the case, I'm okay.
Yeah. Ben?
I, I second the motion, but I, I, if we put all the messaging we want to in a motion, we'll have a motion that's a page long, and Peggy will kill us.
I'm sorry, but I didn't.
If we make, if we put everything in the motion that we want to put in the motion, it'll be a page long. And we're, we're after specific items here, and it's in those two House bills that have passed out of both chambers of legislature on the Governor's desk. That's what the topic is about. I think it's a targeted, keeping our focus on what we're, they're discussing. We're not against the subject matters at all. We're against the method of which they're going about it.
Absolutely.
And so I think the motion addresses that clearly, and what our desire is for, what we would like to see the Governor do.
What about follow-up on Anne's comment about actually using the word veto? Deana?
I just, while it may be not as direct as some of you would have intended, it, I think we know our Chair's thoughts and our Vice Chair's thoughts about these, these bills. And I believe when they speak with the Governor, they will be very clear that the Constitution gives us the authority. And that I believe that most likely the Governor will agree that we have that authority. So I'm comfortable with the, the language that has been chosen. There, sometimes being less direct is a, a benefit in a motion, so.
Jim?
Thank you. I will vote for this, but I too would rather see the word veto. This message went printed by others, by distributed around the state, whether it showed up in the newspaper or whether it showed up on someone's desk or newsletter. It's a little ambiguous. But I, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate your meeting, and I think that's really good. It does give some wiggle room, I guess, you know, that we're not being aggressive or whatever, maybe not aggressive enough. But I will support it, but I would have also supported it if it said the recommendation is that the Governor veto the proposed legislation or the passed legislation.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Betty?
I would as well support it if it said veto.
Right now, we have a motion on the floor. And I don't think I've ever said this before, but, and, and nothing's ever perfect. And several of you expressed your concern that this isn't perfect, but there's also the other side. You can be too str, you can be too strong. If I were writing it, it would say veto, but I understand why it doesn't, and so I'm going to support it enthusiastically. If, if you go, if, if, if at all possible, this needs to be unanimous vote. If you can't do it, that's, that's your business, and that'll be respected. But if all possible, this needs to be a unanimous vote. That being said, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. The motion carries unanimously. Remind everybody that we have a meeting Monday to approve the ENS recommendations from the Task Force. We have, we will receive, the Task Force will receive the second half of the recommendations this evening. The first half last month, or last week, was about 350 pages. I assume that that'll be about that many more, so you'll have a lot of reading to do over the weekend. But I can assure you that the Task Force has looked at these. First of all, the, the staff has done a tremendous job of vetting these, and they've been very, very clear in, in their recommendations. And, and then the Task Force looks over these and, and asks questions. So I'm confident that the recommendations will, will be legal, but you have the opportunity. And I apologize for the timeframe. The federal government gave us a very brief timeframe. We, i, i, if it were within our discretion, you would have much more time, but that's not the case. Remember that you need to fill out your statement of substantial interest. For those of us that have done that for a while, it takes a few seconds if you can remember your passwords. If not, it takes a while. The Governor's Scholars is traditionally the first Sunday in May, but this year, the announcement will be prerecorded and available to watch on demand. And Peggy will send us details later on. And remember that the May meeting, we will meet here on Tuesday, and this is going to be another time, Betty, where we don't have time to finish everything, because we have other. And so we will have a one-day meeting here, and then we will meet at the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind, and I believe this year, we start at the School for the Deaf. Is that correct? Any other comments for the good of the world? Thank you for your participation. This has been an interesting meeting with a lot of important things, and I appreciate your diligence and your discussion and your willingness to, to, to be involved and for your dedication to the children of Kansas. And that being said, we are adjourned.